Good morning, welcome to the committee of the whole meeting of the Cape Coral City Council. Today is March 22nd, 2023. This meeting now comes to order. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Father, and to which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, Your Honor, before I call the roll, I would like to announce that Councilmember Stanky will be arriving after roll call, and I will mark him so. Mayor Gunter?
Here.
Councilmembers Cosson?
Here.
Cummings?
Here.
Hayden?
Here.
Long?
Here.
Shepherd?
Here.
Welsh?
Here.
Devin Preston and one excused.
Thank you. Item four is business. Four A is citizens input time. Citizens input is a maximum of sixty minutes, which is set for the input of citizens on matters concerning city government. Three minutes per individual. Please remember to state your name for the record. Anyone that wishes to participate in citizens input will use the podium to my left, your right.
Good morning. I am here today regarding Redfish Point, a proposed development on land just south of Rotary Park. The owners of the property wish to destroy sensitive mangrove and wetlands to develop-
Ma'am, hold on just a second. Madam City Clerk, I don't think her mic is working.
And I did-
Could you check it, please? Oh, yeah.
You come a little bit closer, and we'll start the time at least in one second.
Okay.
Ready? Would you restart that thing, please? Thank you. Good morning. My name is Eileen Benazia. I am here today regarding Redfish Point, a proposed development on land just south of Rotary Park. The owners of the property wish to destroy sensitive mangrove and wetlands to develop ninety acres of land with residential units, hotel, commercial space, a marina, and a boardwalk. To access the potential development area, the owners want to have part of the 1991 conservation easement that bought his Rose Garden Drive re-leased. A conservation easement is designed to prohibit just this sort of action based upon the whims of future generations destroying a natural environment. A review of the planned boardwalk shows that it is long in the perimeter of the land right through mangroves. How many mangroves will be mistakenly destroyed to construct this? These mangroves protect the land from storm surges. The effect of Hurricane Ian would have much worse to the surrounding properties, including Rotary Park, if the mangroves weren't there. In addition, this is city land. How does the developer plan to have a boardwalk on this protected land? In its April 2021 response to the developer's proposal, the community development department provided comments from various department directors. Among the comments were, in the utilities department, "The area immediately north is built out and the mains were sized accordingly. The proposed development would likely require extensive off-site infrastructure upgrades to serve that level of density they are proposing." I ask, who will pay for these infrastructure upgrades? Also stated was, "With the looming threat of sea level rise and climate change, I don't believe it would be good community climate change resiliency policy to continue permitting developments close to high acid zones next to water. Building in that area is a deemed wetland," which this is, "and has ecological consequences. Planning infrastructure residences, businesses, and people in a wetland has very poor drainage, and the coastal flood hazard zone has potentially extensive impacts financially for livelihoods or life in general. I find it curious that the road does not take the shortest route from Rose Garden to the development site. Rather, it goes all the way east to Southwest First Court, then south, then back west. Is this because the water level is so high that it is already not practical to build a road there? On the western side of this is Cattle Dock Point. If you see this land while on a boat on the river, you'll notice that the water has already encroached upon the land and parts of it are already submerged. You could not have cattle walk on this land now as much as it is underwater. The owner of this property is donating it to the city, and it was beheld as a conservation area. This is ninety-eight acres of land. There will be held high-quality mangroves to be under the public trust." Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else wishing to speak during citizens input?
Dear members of the city council, we are here again to express our concerns regarding the proposed removal of the commercial jet ski rental permits. As hard-working citizens, we have invested our time, money, and energy into providing a valuable service to this community. Our permits have allowed us to earn a honest living, support our families, and contribute to the local economy. While we understand that there have been issues with vendors conducting businesses at the boat ramps, we believe that it is unfair to punish responsible permit holders for the actions of a few bad apples. There has been a lot of illegal charters and boat rentals doing business in the parks. Most of these companies are not even captain certified. We acknowledge that our responsibility to conduct our business in a professional and respectful manner are committed to working with the city to address any concerns. However, we must address an argument that the city is making that is of particular concern to us. The city has suggested that we need to leave the park once the water crafts have been sent out. This is not feasible as customers at times speed and need to be reminded out there in the water. Additionally, emergencies can arise, and every second counts. When it comes to providing assistance, being parked ten to fifteen minutes away from the ramp would be catastrophic, as we would not be able to provide prompted necessary help. We ask the city council to reconsider the proposed removal of our permits and work with us to address any issues. We are committed to following the rules and regulations set forth by the city and providing a valuable service to the community. Thank you for your time and consideration."
Please state your name for the record, please.
Gabriel.
I'm sorry?
Gabriel.
Your last name is what pulled me?
Gabriel Galvez.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak during citizens input?
Hello. Good morning, city members. My name is Sachin Hana, and I'm also the owner of Sunshine Jet Ski Rentals operating out of Horton Park.
Speak a little closer to the mic, please.
Yes, sir. My name is Sachin Hana, and I'm also the owner of Sunshine Jet Ski Rentals operating out of Horton Park.
And I'm James Duvier, Sunset Skiing Water Sports.
So, we heard about the proposal for potentially shutting us down, but I want to address some issues. First issue is the parking. Most of the parking space taken down, we understand after the hurricane, there's not too many parking spaces available, but most of the parking space is already gone in the morning with the illegal charters operating from there. They come in, they've launched a boat, they don't have no insurance, no nothing. They don't even go through a proper orientation with the customers. They come in, drop the boat, leave the trailers, and we are the face over there. Everyone who comes in thinks it's us who is creating the issues. As far as speeding in the manatee zones goes, if there are ten people going out, nine of them will listen, will follow the instruction. We go through a thirty-minute orientation before we send someone out. But if somebody is not listening, there's no way for us to find out that this person is not going to follow. So at the same time, between all five companies, we stand there, and we are in the water, making sure that nobody, like everyone, follows the rule. Sometimes we are not able to see that, and the cars pull them over. But at the same time, if someone is not following the rules, if you rent a car from any of the big companies out there, it doesn't mean that we just go ahead and just shut the company down. We have to address the issue.
I think one of the biggest problems is in Lee County right now.
You got to speak one at a time.
Sure, sir.
Sorry. Go ahead.
So, after when the hurricane happened, we were out of business for five months. Between all of our companies, we were literally paying about twelve to fourteen thousand dollars just in insurance payments. This doesn't even count the jet ski payments. This guy, James, he had two boats, brand-new boats, that he had had them out. Didn't even take no donation or anything. For like twelve days straight, we had our jet skis, our boats on, we were helping the residents of Lee County and Cape Coral. We didn't ask them for gas or anything, just because we wanted to help. So, I come from a low-middle-class family in India. Like, my father's monthly wage is about four hundred dollars. He has helped me out from working in the Indian Air Force for twenty-six years, and I have worked at the gas station for five years in the nighttime, just because I have a vision, I save money, borrowed a lot of money, and now, just rather than addressing the issue, just coming one day and, hey, you guys got to go. So, this business has like about fifty-nine families, fifty-nine people that it's going to affect, and it will literally put us out on the streets, sir. So, we have all decided that we are splitting half and half. Half of them are going Rosen, which is like five times a boat ramp size.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir, you can speak now if you'd like. Just remember to state your name, please.
James Duvier, Sunset Skiing Water Sports. I think the biggest problem that we're having is we have three boat ramps open in entirely Lee County at this point, and everybody's using Horton for their daily use, which is overcrowding. There's no parking signs. There's cars parking in the boat ramp, and all this is coming back to us. It's not our customers that are doing this. We actually have people park in designated areas, and maybe for one spot, we'll put two cars in it. And we're never busy enough to where we have that many people that are taking over the entire boat ramp. So, that's really all for me. But we are giving back the best we can to the community, so I would like you guys to keep that in mind. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak during citizens input? Seeing none, citizens input is now closed. Is there any council discussion on citizens input? Councilmember Shepherd.
I would just like to say thank you for coming in today and giving your opinion on the different topics, and we are listening. Thank you.
All right, seeing no other comments, we will move on to item four B, which is discussion. B1 is Cape Coral Special Events Permitting and Process. Mr. City Manager.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I will turn this presentation over to our Parks and Rec Director, Joe Patrulla, and I believe he may have some staff that are here from special events. I would like to, just before he starts, introduce them to you all so you understand who on our staff is actually performing this work and the processes that they are tasked with. Joe?
Thank you, City Manager. Joe Patrulla, Parks and Recreation Director. So first, I wanted to say thanks for having us here today. I'm going to have a couple of staff members come present with me. But I did want to introduce our special events team. We've got Todd here with us, Emily and Ally. They are the ones who are behind the scenes, along with Lance, who's our logistics guy. He's not here, he's setting up right now. But they are a team. They do a lot of the hard lifting. Like Todd said, they're not just sprinkling pixie dust. They're out there working pretty hard to get things done and the special events going. So, much appreciated for everything they do, and we just wanted to put names with the faces and who they are. So, thank you. Now let's have to figure out how to use a computer. All right. Is it in presentation mode? Yeah, why don't you take it a little bit here? Thank you. All right. All things special events. So when we think about special events, what does it mean to us as a community? When we take a look at, you know, the vision of Cape Coral and the mission of Cape Coral, we see words like vibrant, inclusive, giving us character, creates economic opportunity, enhances the quality of life, those kind of things. To me, that is what special events is. Special events is from our 2016 master plan. It's to celebrate the Cape and provide opportunities to the community and residents through gathering and people, places, topography, and who we are as a community. And that's what special events does. It really brings everyone together. You go to some of these events, and you see people who, all race, all ethnicities, all economic input, economic levels, and all, everything. Everybody's involved in those events. So, to me, they're one of our number-one, and according to the community, number-one need in the Cape Coral area. So, when we think about this presentation, we really want to think about who are we affecting, and what are we doing, and why are we doing it. So, with that, I'm going to leave that over with our Recreation Superintendent Keith Lachlan. He'll take us through the next set of the presentation.
Morning. As Joe said, my name's Keith Lachlan. I'm your Recreation Superintendent. I kind of oversee the permitting process for special events in the city. I think you guys have already seen the presentation, so I'll be really brief on what's entailed into it. We permit just about everything that is a public gathering in the city that affects public property, for sure. Our general rule is five hundred more people, it affects public right-of-way, they got to get a permit. As you can see, there's some of the examples, athletic parades, concerts, events, functions, and things of that nature. Our events are currently held everywhere in the city. Till we get a special event, festival grounds, that's still a challenge in our city. We close streets, we use public properties, we try to fit the events in locations that are appropriate for their size and scope. Most of our events are put on by most of our service organizations still. We don't have a lot of professionals in the city putting on events like other larger cities do have. So, every year, it's who raised their hand, who became chairman of the event, and, you know, as chairman, you're pretty much doing the whole work. So, Parks and Rec does a lot of work with these novices, really, that have never really put the event together, don't understand the process. They're kind of just learning it. There's a lot that goes into putting on a special event in the city. So, part of our role is helping walk through things they need to think about, the permit, the site plan, and any licensing requirements. So, it all begins with the application online, which is through our intergov system. It's a great system. It is housing all of our permits currently. That is required sixty days prior to the event, at a minimum. We try to get them to do it ninety-six months. We will take that permit a year in advance. But at a minimum, sixty days to get a fully-completed permit, and generally, that's because the insurance is the last thing we get from event producers, and that's a sixty-day window for most of them. Everything else can be accomplished much, much earlier. So, they're currently submitting the application online. It comes to us. We do a first review. We make sure it's a fully-completed application before we send it to the various departments. We typically spend about ten days reviewing that. We'll get back to the applicant if there's some issues, or like a parade, the route is not sufficient. It may have been fine last year. This year, we have some construction going on, and we need to readjust. All new events, we do a mandatory meeting, and occasionally we have done some walkthroughs. The police department has done walkthroughs. Transportation can do a walkthrough. We do a walkthrough, if needed, on a new event site that we're not as familiar with that they're requesting. So, the permit group is pretty extensive in the city. We send the permits out via email to about forty individuals to make sure that we have plenty of eyes on what they're proposing and the size and scope and the effect it could have on our residents and properties. The committee itself, which is the group that we meet with the event producers individually, we sit down, we come in with our questions, we have them come in and tell us about their event, includes Parks and Rec, police, planning, risk management, fire, public work, stormwater transportation, planning, solid waste and code. It's a big group. It's a lot of people. It's a lot of eyes on the permit itself. There's generally a lot of questions. The process has worked pretty well. We do have some recommendations. We're updating the application. Our application has gotten outdated, and as times have changed and security measures need to be put in place and safety protocols for having parades and events, we're asking for a little more detail from the event producers to really give some thought into how they're constructing their event and keeping it safe in the initial application. So, we're kind of fleshing out some of the information that we're requesting. We're also creating a guide to go along with that to help our event producers kind of walk through that process. Step one, you need to fill this out. Two, this, to help guide them through that process. And then, three, we're considering some additional charging of fees because of additional staff requirements. Some of these events are either requesting or requiring regarding review of MOTs and making sure the barricades are put up, or hardening devices, which has become a big thing to make sure the cars don't just, you know, drive into an event area. Those are things that many of the event producers aren't thinking about or cognizant of, and we're trying to help them through that process. That is pretty much it for the permit process. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Is that the entire presentation?
No, there's some additional information.
Why don't we go through the whole presentation, and then I'll open it up.
Okay. So, the second part is on our partnership agreement with the special events, and our Revenue and Facilities Superintendent Lucille Valencourt Kreider will present that portion. Thank you.
Good morning. So, we'll go over the partnership part of special events that are held within the city. Back in 2021, we came in front of council and approved a resolution 4521, which discussed our partnership agreements with organizations and the value of money authorization. So, this kind of outlines what we came forth with. This came about from an audit that was done in 2020, and this was addressing some of the audit pieces, which you'll see throughout this portion of the presentation. So, these were the audit recommendations, develop procedures and create comprehensive manual, update special events permit application, which is the portion that Keith just went over with you, and develop contracts for vendors and sponsors. So, some of the approved equipment that came in front of the council as well was outlined here, and the dollar amounts were given. These are specifically for organizations that are coming to us for an event that need certain equipment, and this was the approved equipment list. Item one has all of the approvals and the amounts. Item two are those items that were not on the list, but we currently do provide at times. So, this is part of that area. All of these items, we're looking at, we put on the partnership agreement that we do with organizations, if they so ask for it. So, this slide kind of shows the different categories that we have for events. So, the first one is what we produce as a city. The second area is co-hosted special events. Kind of gives you an idea of what those might be. Borang owl, Iwo Jima, filling the store. Then, mostly in the co-hosted, you will see a lot of that as our veterans events that occur. And the third one is independent special events supported by in-kind. These are the ones that would have potentially sponsorship agreements that we do and have had sponsorship agreements in the past. So, our recommendations for this portion is create a grant program, really have a set amount of money that we give out in-kind to organizations. Right now, it's just, we accept, we look and see if it meets the criteria for our partnership agreement. There's really no set amount total for the city. We try to help as many people as we can with in-kind services. With that being said, they also give back to us, with a majority of them will give back volunteer hours or whatever the agreement comes up with. So, part of what the applicants that you have, you can see the different requirements when we put an application forward for a partnership agreement. We're also looking to fund the in-kind partnerships in the budget each year, to maximize and determine the allocation per event. So, is there a maximum? So, we're kind of depending on who provides a partnership agreement. How come this one, we're giving twenty-five hundred, and this one, we're giving ten thousand? We're trying to balance that off to see what we can do. So, that's one of our recommendations. And organizations will be required to provide up to fifty volunteer hours supporting city-sponsored events. They typically do that now, but it is difficult for some of these organizations. What we were doing was in-kind amount of volunteer hours. So, if you were getting approximately twenty-five hundred dollars worth, we would need to offset that with almost a hundred hours' worth. And some of the organizations don't have the manpower to be able to do that, so we want to take a relook at that and see what we can do. So, those are our recommendations. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you all for assisting with the presentation, Mayor, City Council. That ends our presentation. If there are any questions that you might have, so.
Thank you. First off, I'd like to say to the special events staff, I know they do a phenomenal job every time we have an event, so thank you for all your hard work every time we have these events. So, I just wanted to make sure that we said that to start with. I guess I'll start, you know, with the discussion, and I will share with you some of the discussion that I had with the city manager on my one-on-one meeting. When it comes to special events in the city, first and foremost, I will say that I think we can do a better job. I can't tell you how many times that I go across the bridge to Fort Myers and participate in some of their special events, because we don't have them here in the city. Example, I participated St. Patrick's Day event over in Fort Myers last week. Great event, very, very well attended. I even sent the city manager a picture while I was over there and said, what are we doing wrong? So, I think that as the 2016 Parks Master Plan was developed, and one of the main concerns from the community was special events here in our city. With that being said, how I see our special events moving forward personally, I see three separate classifications. One being city-sponsored events as one classification, and there will be an outline criteria for that particular silo or identification. The second would be partnership events, where we partner with organizations. And when we partner, it's very defined in what that partnership will be. For an example, I know like Bike Night, we typically provide the public safety aspect, which is police and fire, and usually the barricades for the transportation, for the safety of the event. safety of the event. And then you have private events, and that's simply just what it says. It's at a private event that they bear all the expense. So with those three different classifications, of course, city-sponsored events, we would bear the cost 100% for that event. A partnership, I think we need to outline exactly what the city is providing. Is it just the barricades, the public safety aspect, or does it go beyond that? Now with the partnership and the private classifications, you know, with the list of values that you have placed on certain items, I think whether we're in a partnership or a private event, that is available to the particular organization that's putting on the event. It's already been identified what those costs are, and that would bear on their end of the partnership. If it's a private event, of course, they're going to bear all those costs. Additionally, I think as a part of our budget each year, that we have to identify a dollar amount and have a dollar amount for city-sponsored events and partnerships. I think those two should be separate, whatever that cost may be. For an example, just say we say we're going to put $100,000 in for city-sponsored events, and I see those as, you know, red, white, and boom, Fourth of July, we have the Jazz Festival coming up, we used to have Coconut Fest, you know, there's several of them. So I think we as a council, when we approve the budget, a part of the budget process, we should approve what city-sponsored events are going to be in the city. Now, we all know, we have a meeting twice a month. There could be a point in time where one of two things could occur. There may be someone that comes forward that we may want to have an additional city-sponsored event, or we may want to enter into a partnership. And the city manager could bring that forward at any time, twice a month, and if it's not on our list, we as a council can add it on our list. So I think councils should approve the city-sponsored events and any partnerships that we're going to have each and every year, have a defined dollar amount that is set aside for those two classifications, and then move forward in that fashion. And that does two things. You know, when we're using city tax dollars to promote events, this council collectively will identify those events each and every year, and this could grow hopefully over time because I think we have plenty of room for growth. I think the policies that you've seen that staff has outlined today, you know, is a good starting point. There may be a few things that they could elaborate a little further on to make it as crystal clear as possible. If you look at ordinance 45-21, basically, staff has pretty much all the power to do exactly what they want. And when you look at, you know, the 25,000 that the park superintendent, 50,000 for the director, 100,000 for the city manager, no matter if it's dealing with parks or any other topic, that's kind of set in a standard. You know, if they want to buy something, if it's less than $25,000, the superintendent can approve that now. The same thing with the, my understanding, the directors have a threshold of 50,000, the city manager has a threshold of 100. But I think when it comes to special events, we as a council collectively identify those each year. There is a dollar amount put in the budget for those two separate classifications. And we identify, especially in the partnerships, exactly what we'll provide and what we will not provide. And then it would be up to the person who's organizing the event and the partnership to cover the rest of the cost that we did not provide. And, you know, having a policy, no matter what the organization is that comes forward, I think is important. That way, we've defined the policy, we've identified the event that we're going to sponsor or the event that we're going to partner in. And like I said, throughout the year, we can change that at any time by a vote of this council or any future council. So for me, that's where I see this program going forward, have a very clear, defined policy for each one of those classifications. And that way, there's, this council has the discretion to identify those events each and every year and to add throughout the year an event if it's our desire to do so. So like everything, we make decisions collectively as a council, and I think this particular topic is no different. Thank you. Councilmember Steinkie.
Thank you. I think directionally, we're headed in the right direction. In my time with the city manager this week, I had shared the thought that we would establish what would be considered standing events, and those particularly relate to those city events, if you would, that to some degree, the city becomes known for. I think all of us in our travels have gone to places and they have their, you know, banner events and everyone, that's where they flock to that city for that particular event. And so you mentioned Coconut Fest, that used to be something that our family looked forward to every year. It's not there anymore. And so to make the decision of things that we will have events that our city becomes known for and that, you know, people look forward to every year, certainly Red, White, and Boom has been extremely popular. But then we move into the whole budgeting process. And so to, if we're going to make them standing events, then we know that every year, we need to have those dollars in the budget. And with the budget coming up, this certainly couldn't be timed any better to make these decisions and determinations. The special events that you would have, other than those standing events, I agree that there would be some that we would certainly want to support, some of the efforts of the groups that would come and want to bring that event. It wouldn't necessarily be an every-year event. You'd see how it went this year. If it didn't go well, or there were reasons not to have it the following year because it was a special event, we'd have the opportunity to approve or deny that. And obviously, if it were a partnership, then we would have to have dollars allocated for those partnerships year in and year out. And like any other grant program, there's a specific amount of money on a first-come, first-served basis. And so, you know, you must have your application in at least 60 days ahead of time. Well, that would certainly, I would think, motivate those that wanted to have a partnership event with the city to get those applications in as early as possible to make sure that they made it into that funding for that year. And then, you know, the independent organizations that didn't receive partnership support from the city. And I think it's important to note, and we've talked about it, that in-kind, I don't think, I don't think a lot of times people understand what in-kind means. And so when we say we're going to give $5,000 toward an event, it doesn't mean we're stroking a check. We're just offsetting an expense to say, you know, we'll go ahead and cover the law enforcement required, the fire required, the barricades, the trash barrels, whatever, in an amount up to this amount. So it's not like we're actually writing a check. We're just allowing that value of service that they would otherwise have to pay for. So that's just my input. I think we're headed in the right direction. I think the work that's been done so far is good work and that just, you know, a little refining, and I think we're on the right track.
Thank you. Councilmember Hayden.
Yeah, you know, I think we're following a course where we can come, where we can get to the point where we have a solution that works for everybody. My concern is what was laid out about the third category. Two of the three biggest events in the city are in that third category, the Festival of Lights and the Art Festival. I can make a case that those have been partnerships for a lot of years, whether it's with the Rotary or with the Chamber. And to identify and keep those as independent, you know, I don't think is correct because I think the city's established something with those groups that have made those events extremely popular for the community. I mean, the Arts Festivals are on 60,000 people for a weekend, which arguably is our biggest two-day event in the Festival of Lights. So I don't have an issue with the first two categories. In fact, Bike Night, that was largely sponsored by a law firm for a lot of years, so you can make a case that that was a co-hosted event anyway, even though we're doing more for that event as we could. You know, if we want to identify a pot of money that can go for any of these events, especially that third category, I think it's more about word usage and how we're defining these events because, you know, I think that third category lists events that already have established relationships with the city, and they're not really private. They're using public roads anyway. Two of those events shut down Cape Coral Parkway. We only really do that three times a year or so. You know, I think there's more to be developed here with these categories, but it's a hardship on events that have counted on our support over the years, and all of a sudden change direction on them, I think is wrong. If we develop the fund that can be used for these other events, that'll be great. Thanks, Mayor.
Councilmember Cummings.
Yes. So my question would be for the future partnerships, how would we determine this? Because I feel like if we accept one and deny another one, that's creating favoritism. So I'm not in agreement with that. Number two, where I come from and most cities, as you saw, even in Fort Myers, every holiday, they have a special event except for Cape Coral. So my concern is why are we not just focused on holidays, celebration time, we put the monies in there, and then any of these other partnerships? We would have to figure out, how do we determine partnering up with them? Because I feel like it could create some problems in the near future. Well, you accepted this one, but you didn't accept, you know, this one. So I feel like that could create some problems, and I'm just trying to take a look at it at a different standpoint of, you know, what have you been doing for the last 10 years? Not the last, you know, I'm just throwing a number out there. Has it been successful? How successful has it been for the businesses around it of making money? If it hasn't been successful, then maybe we need to relook at that event and look at doing events like St. Patrick's Day. Guarantee you, Fort Myers made a lot of money. We didn't have an event for St. Patrick's Day. You know, we didn't have a Purple Heart event. You know, this is Purple Heart City. That makes no sense to me. So I feel like we need to relook at what are, the holidays are very important to the residents of Cape Coral, and if we're going to do partnerships, how are we going to determine who we choose without showing favoritism? Thank you.
I don't see any other lights on. Anyone else want to? Councilmember Shepherd?
Yes. I'm not against private organizations bringing forth events, but I think that the city lacks events, and I agree that there are holidays that maybe we should do a little more. And we've already started to do little things, like we did a little bit more last year for Christmas than what was done in the past, and I think it was a big success. So I think we have to learn how to expand these events so that more people throughout the city could be involved. In the past, most of our events were in the downtown area. Our city has grown a lot. I think we need to start thinking outside the box and having some events in other parts of the city, the northern part of our city, you know, just different areas so that more people in the city can feel that they're a part. I would, if we were sitting down right now talking about money and where to put it when it comes to events, I would be interested in spending more money, adding more money to the events that the city does. I'm not saying in any way, I don't want to support the nonprofits and the other organizations. I'm not saying that. I think it's valuable for us to add some more events throughout the year and, you know, based like when different holidays, like our council, other council member has said, invest more money in them because I think that what that does, it builds community, it has a good impact. Like another council member said, cities are known for certain events, and maybe we need to start being known for certain events. You know, it's a great marketing tool, builds community. But I think a lot of our events that are successful are just too small, and the majority of the city can't be involved. So I think we need to look at how we can improve the successful events we have, maybe invest more, and maybe come up with ways where more people throughout the city can be involved. I brought up a while ago, parades. I think it was about a year and a half, two years ago. I forget what parade it was, but I had citizens reach out to me and they said, you know, how come the parades are always just in the downtown area? You know, most people that come from other parts of the country, a parade, you know, I mean, everything has, our cities and towns have changed. Most parades would go straight through the town or straight through the city where so many people that didn't even have the ability to drive can walk to the main road near their neighborhood where the event's going to pass. So they could all be involved. So I had brought up, you know, how come our parade can't go from one end of the city to the other? And I'm not saying it's possible. I'm just saying we need to think outside the box. We're running out of space. Another complaint from citizens was that when we do have the parades downtown, the amount of people that show up, there's not enough space for everybody to congregate at the curb to watch because we're dealing with a lot more people now. So we're having the same size parade length that we've had 20 and 30 years ago, and we have, and our population has grown tremendously. So I think that staff and council need to look at how we can improve the events we have, think outside the box, but mainly think of how can we get more citizens involved and how can we make it possible for the ability for more citizens to attend. I noticed a lot of walkers in the downtown events, and there are people that live in that area. They were able, if, you know, dad's working and he has the car and there's an event, they can literally walk to the event. Our citizens in other parts of the city don't have that, don't have that availability. So I think we're on the right track. I like that we're talking about it because it shows that we're being proactive, that we want to improve what we already have. And I don't want to repeat what other council members have said, but I think everybody has brought up good ideas. Thank you.
Councilmember Welsh.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just looking at the recommendations and I'm going to address them individually because I think we all agree that we want better events. So I agree, creating a grant program for additional monetary support will be good. Yes, also budget funds annually for in-kind partnerships. If we come up with a number, and then the different organizations, no matter who they are or what they are, can apply for them. And, you know, it'd be budgeted. The one that's kind of concerning me is the volunteer hours. I know that when we did the audit on the volunteer hours, there was a lot, and I know there's a lot of event organizers that use that. And I don't know if we ever really get the hours back. So I would say we would remove the volunteer hours in lieu of payment or renting of the city facilities. I know we've got the numbers in here for the city stage, which I think is a fair price that we charge. The stage is getting older, and we're probably going to have to replace it. And in order to replace it, we're going to need the money to do it. So as people are using it, I think they need to pay for it. As far as some of these things like trash barrels, bicycle barricades, I know the Rotary Club donated them to be used, and the city holds them. So I think partnerships with community organizers like that is good to keep. But there is, if it's something that we can provide as a city to help an organization out, no matter what it is, I think we should do it to make the best event possible because that's what looks good on our the best event possible, because that's what looks good on our city as well. So if we have the ability to provide these trash barrels and to provide the bicycle barricades, and it's not a great cost, I want to be more open to having our events, the best possible events, to be made. So those are just my comments. Thank you.
Councilmember Long.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to provide some brief perspectives, so we don't beat ourselves up too much when we compare ourselves to Fort Myers. I think there's some geographic limitations between the two different cities that adds some additional complexities to us being able to host events similar to, for example, the St. Patrick's Day. So, you know, they're able to shut down their downtown corridor in a way that really doesn't impact traffic in any meaningful way, and I don't think that we have that same benefit. And so it's my understanding, Mr. City Manager, if you can elaborate, or maybe I'm incorrect, and if so, please let me know. But do we have some issues with being able to host events on 47th as it pertains to some, something along the lines of the way that the utilities are connected for fire, or?
Yeah, so when 47th was designed, it was intended to basically take away from the, basically the right-of-way was like 70% for vehicles, 30% for pedestrians. When that streetscape was designed, we basically inverted that and made 70% of the right-of-way available for pedestrians and only 30% for vehicles. In doing that, some of the building fire department connections were placed on 47th. So there is still some limitation for shutting down the roadway, because if there were to be a fire, it would be nearly impossible for a fire truck to respond, connect to that fire department connection, and be able to handle whatever situation was before them. A couple of years ago, there was an attempt to correct that situation. Several fire hydrants were relocated off of 47th and moved into the parking lots, so that the fire trucks could respond to an event from the perimeters. However, the fire depart connections, fire department connections still exist on the front of the buildings. There was an attempt of the CRA board to work with CIA to enter into an agreement with a contractor to perform work on those buildings to move those to the back of the building, so a fire could respond fully to a situation from the backside as, and not have to impact all the people or the event taking place on 47th. To date, that project has not been completed. Within this past three weeks, I have discussed this with CIA and the CRA board and public work staff, and that project has been taken over by a city staff member in the, in the hopes of completing it so that we could shut down the streets in their entirety and actually have even more successful events on 47th as originally planned.
Sure. Because that puts us in a difficult position, and a lot of the events that we do have, we're forced to sort of shut down Cape Parkway, which is a significant vein for traffic flow in ingress and egress, in and out of the city for the purposes of the bridge. I mean, we even get complaints, or I have personally, we're having to shut down Cape Parkway for the Veterans Day Parade, for example, which to me is silly. But we do have that issue. I just wanted to make clear that that's a problem that we have that might be different than Fort Myers, where they're able to block everything off, and there's no main thoroughfare there that they're impeding on. One other comment on the recommendations here with the grant program. A lot of these things here, as far as the criteria, are sort of subjective requirements. Who would be the one that would make these determinations or check these boxes as to whether they provide a significant direct economic benefit, for example, to the community at large in a measurable way?
Mayor, city council members, you know, we'd have to work the criteria out, and then have you all agree upon it. We'd have to meet the threshold of whatever, it might be 70%, 8% of the criteria needs to be met in order to have that. But we'd have to work out the criteria and really develop it and think thoroughly through what that means and define each of it.
Okay. I mean, as clear as we can be, and I know it's difficult to fully nail everything down, but, you know, a lot of the times in my involvement in the private sector, working with government entities, and you have these sort of loose regulations and requirements, it's really subjective to the extent that whoever's on the counter that day, you know, makes that determination, and that might be separate than who's at the counter the next time you come around, and they might have their own opinion. So I want to be clear that these are great headpoints, but that there's a little bit more, like you said, maybe a point system or something to that effect, so that they're a little bit more defined and not as loosely sort of regulated. That'd be my only comment on that.
Yeah, just to kind of elaborate a little further, the criteria that would be met would be probably in front of a committee. So we have a committee of individuals that could include a couple of council members, could include our fire department, police, Parks and Recreation. So then we are looking at it at a balanced approach, not just, you know, somebody at the front.
Okay, so that was my first question. All right, thank you.
Councilmember Cos.
Thank you, Mayor. Heard a lot of good ideas today. I don't actually disagree with any of them. But I do support the recommendations of staff here in the presentation. I like the idea of stating specifically that the event meets the city's values and mission. And I also like the idea of kind of fleshing that out and talking what specifically that means, because at some point, there might be an event that doesn't meet our values, and so we need to be careful. Not just a subjective look by someone in the Parks Department, we need to be specific about what we mean. And I also agree that we need to add more events in the north. I'd love to see that, if we could find a place. I don't know if we can. It's difficult in the north, but I think that's important to include everybody in the community. Thank you.
Yeah, a couple of the things I wanted to mention, and I'm glad Councilmember Welsh brought it up, because I had it in my notes, forgot to talk about it, is the 50 hours. I agree with him. For the most part, what I've heard is typically, we never see those hours. So I agree with him, we should take that off the plate completely. And to go back to some of my previous comments, and to maybe reiterate a little more of what Councilmember Hayden said, when you look at the independent special events, some of those events have been happening each and every year for years. So I don't know if they should be in the independent category. That's why I think we should have the three, pretty much very similar to what staff had provided to us, three separate events. One is a city-sponsored event, a partnership, and an independent or a private. You know, you take a look at Art Festival, you take a look at Festival of Lights, some of those types of programs. You know, I think clearly, whether it is a city-sponsored event or a partnership that we entertain, it should be a benefit for the community as a whole. And that's the type of events that we either want a partnership in, or that we want to sponsor 100% for ourselves. And I go back to each and every year, I think those events need to be outlined, you know, even like the partnership events, you know, that, I know the Art Festival's been around here for years. I know that the Festival of Lights has been around for years. So those type of events, even though they're a partnership, I think we could identify them very similar to what Councilmember Stanky said, that they are a repeat event each and every year. You know, that, you know, that we're going to partnership with that particular organization. I do believe the events, once the criterias or the classifications have been identified, and what we will and won't do, I think each and every year, a part of the budget process, I think that's something that we approve as a council. You know, I had heard Councilmember Long had mentioned about staff possibly identifying and approving those. I don't agree with that personally, because that one staff member may change, and they may have a different opinion, especially when it comes to the city-sponsored or the partnerships. I think that is a decision for this council, or for any future councils to make. And as a part of that, that's a part of the budget process. And again, I think we should, like Councilmember Shepherd had mentioned, you know, you put a lot of emphasis maybe on the city-sponsored events as far as a dollar amount, but then you have, you know, a less amount that we put for the partnership events. I don't know. That's something that we'll have to, we'll have to work out in the details. So again, that's the direction that I think that we should go in, where city council identifies what type of an event, one of the three categories. I think we identify the dollar amount that we want to spend for these types of events. It sounds like all of council has a desire to broaden our special events in the city. The only way to do that is by dollars. You know, so we kind of, we got to kind of put the money where our desire may be for the, for these types of events. So that's the direction that I see. Councilmember Welsh, did you have something else?
Yeah. When it comes to council's decision on what kind of sponsorship, I think we need to set a limit to where we can allow staff to have that discretion. I don't, I don't think we need to decide that if the city's going to donate trash barrels to Tom's barbecue event as a collective council. So I think what, when we set this, we need to set a dollar limit as far as in-kind donations that the city staff can tend to, because I certainly don't want to be up here using our time when we're supposed to be dealing with policy, working on special events. So I think we need to come up with a dollar figure that, once it exceeds that, then it comes to council's decision. But anything below that, I know we've got these very loose, you know, 50,000, 100,000, we can kind of tighten the reins a little bit, but also give some discretion to the workers that deal with this every day.
Maybe I didn't do a good job trying to explain myself, and I agree with you 100%. I don't want to be up here talking about trash barrels. I think our role as a council to put these organizations in a silo. Are they a city-sponsored event? Are they a partnership? Or are they a private event? I think that's our job. Once we have this defined list that was already outlined here in our presentation, and then some of the events that, items that maybe weren't a dollar amount, maybe we add a dollar amount to those, I don't know. I agree with you. I'm not interested in getting in the weeds. I just think it's his council's responsibility to pick what a city-sponsored event, a partnership, and a private event is. We will, we hopefully have, if it's a city-sponsored event, we're going to do X. This is the criteria. If it's a partnership, we're going to do this criteria. If it's a private event, we're going to do this criteria. So I think we'll have that established. It's just our job to put them in the silo that's applicable for that particular event. Councilmember Cummings.
Yeah. Have you looked at the other cities, Mayor, to kind of see what they've spent their monies on, on their events, like a city similar to our size, for like, like your partnership? I mean, did you look into this at all to kind of get an idea?
Yeah, I didn't get into any specifics. I know Fort Myers has a particular organization that runs their special events, and there is a dollar amount that their city council puts in a budget for each and every year.
Can I ask you what it is?
What's that organization?
The River District?
Yeah. The River District.
River Alliance, I think.
Yeah, River Alliance District. So the city gives that particular organization a bucket of money. They have a criteria that they've established that they have to meet and follow. Then the River District, I guess, handles, handles the events from there.
Okay. So I was trying to see if you had a, like a business model to go off of, kind of get an idea of how they do it and what their budget is.
100,000 a year, isn't that what it is? I thought, the last I had heard, now it may have changed. I know they do 100,000 a year to the River Alliance.
We can get the information.
Maybe, the staff have any information on that?
I do not. Keith, do you have anything?
That's the breakdown.
Yeah, we have it here. Thanks, Matt. From government grants, it's 20, about 20, 278,000. In-program service revenues, they get about 85,000 in revenues from that, and then investment income's minimal. So, but it's about 200, just under 280,000. And then the offset revenue was about 90,000, so.
About 150 or somewhere in that neighborhood.
Okay, perfect. Thanks.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you. I think all the discussion that was held this morning aligns with the recommendations that, that staff had provided, although they, they came in at different points of the discussion. But it, what staff had recommended was putting, budgeting funds annually, and I think several of you said, let's review the list of what is going to happen annually. Let's make sure there's appropriate monies in there. So I think we're on the same page with that. And so we'll put together a process in that regard. The list of materials that was provided was actually a list of rentals. So the intent of that is to have those amenities available for the independent special events. And so if you, it may have been missed, but the title of that slide was rentals available for independent events. So it's things that we have in stock that will help those private independent events be available, be successful. The issue that we have there is, that list is, is growing, right? If a new event comes and, or we end up buying something in the middle of the year under our authority, we just need to have the discretion to add that on the list as an available rental and come back to you to set that fee. So we'll make that part of the process that we bring back in the policy that we put together. Most of this can fit what we've discussed in a revision or an amendment to Resolution 4521. We can strengthen that work off of the success that we have in there and make, put language in there about, when we'll take applications, how we'll take applications, when council will do the appropriation, when they will approve, what is city-sponsored, what is not. And lastly, an overwhelming comment that I heard this morning was holiday events. And so last year, we had the tree lighting ceremony, we had the Halloween event that was, you know, hugely successful and attended very well by our residents. So we will look at the holiday seasons and look and see which events we have aligned with those, and then which holidays do not have that. And when we bring this back to you all, we will identify those that we do not have to see if there's an interest in allocating additional dollars or designating a city-sponsored event in that regard. We have a couple of months before we start meeting with council on the budget. Would you all like to see a draft of this kind of policy revision prior to that, so it's already established by the time we get in there? I think that would be beneficial, and we'd just like your concurrence on that, so we can take the appropriate direction and move forward revising this.
I think that's a good idea.
Okay. Very well. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Shepherd?
I still see your light on. What I was going to say was.
Okay. And Councilmember Stanky.
Yeah, thank you. There was a, in the recommendations, one B, says provides a significant direct economic benefit to the community at large in a measurable way. I know one thing that I would like to see as we evaluate the items in those three categories and the determination of what will be a standing event, what will be a special event, partnered or independent, is maybe over, most everything that I see on those lists, we've done before, and we've done them a number of times. I think it would be helpful for me to, to take them, not necessarily in the categories that they are, but to determine what was the measurable way that we saw that that event impacted our area, whether it's a matter of drawing additional, you know, guests to our city, whether it's providing, you know, monetary uplift to the businesses that they visited, and then if it was a shared event, what did we bring to the table? What did they bring to the table? And if it was just totally city-sponsored, what was our investment? And if we could take a look at that over the past few years, maybe, maybe, yeah, three years is tough, though. You got COVID, and then, of course, Ian. But if we could at least put some tangible evidence around that to say, is that where we want to put this amount of money? And do we want to commit to that for a long period of time and make it a standing event, and try to make it something the city is known for, and bill it that way? You know, when, when you think about Plant City, you think of the Strawberry Festival. I mean, that's what you think of. And there's a variety of other cities with, and so when, when someone thinks of Cape Coral, what do they think of? And that would be where those events, you know, would, would come in. And so to determine where we'd place our dollars and where we'd place our focus and our support, you know, certainly having that data would be helpful in determining which should be something that's an ad hoc, or what is something that we want to really commit ourselves to. Thank you.
Yeah, the other thing I thought of when you were speaking was also, you know, if this council puts a particular organization in a partnership category, if that's the direction that we go in, there needs to be a defined what we're going to provide in that partnership. That way, it's evenly distributed, no matter. That way it's evenly distributed, no matter who the organization is. So if organization A comes, we as a council, if that's the direction we go, say, okay, that's a partnership event, this is what you're entitled to. Not saying you have to take all these items, but this is what we will provide as a city. And that is, no matter who the organization. And I think that's extremely important, that that's defined in our policy moving forward. This is exactly, especially in the partnerships. You know, we're going to, we're going to partner with you in this event, and this is exactly what we'll provide. You also have this available to you at this dollar amount. But this is exactly what the city is going to provide, no matter who the organization. What I don't want to get into is organization coming in and say, I'll take this, and I won't take that, but I'll take this over here, and then we have to go. To me, this here is what you're, what's available to you. And I think that needs to be specified in our policy. Any other questions? Mr. City Manager, any other comments?
I have none for this topic, but we will, we will come back with a revised policy most likely prior to a hiatus, so we can bring, present that before you, see if there's any final tweaks, and then put it in a resolution form.
All right. Thanks staff for the information, the presentation. Okay, we'll move on to item four B two, which is commercial recreational watercraft rental permits. Mr. City Manager?
Yes. This item is up for discussion. There were several business owners that spoke here this morning. I do want to let you know that prior to us getting into this discussion, our staff did provide a notice of possible suspension or termination of this program pending the outcome of the discussion and where we want to go with this policy. Right now, there is an administrative program that was put in place to help alleviate the congestion at the Yacht Club. That policy was basically a parking program, parking permit program. And when you think about a, a park, you have a various number of fees. There's an entrance fee, so if you, if you've been to like a state park, there's a fee to basically enter the park. There are parking fees, and then there are usage fees for the amenity that you use, whether it be the pool, whether it be a boat ramp. In our, in our boat ramps, we don't charge a launch fee or a usage fee, we basically have the parking fee where you pay to park. And we typically don't have an entrance fee. We did have one at Sunsplash, but now that entrance fee is being administered by the entity that's running the park for us. So that just kind of sets the stage. My hope for the, the end of today's discussion on this, this program is to, one, determine, is the existing program that we have capturing what we wanted to capture? Do we, do we want to continue a program? And if so, do we want it to remain at the administrative level, or do we want it to be a legislative policy? And if so, to me, I see four alternatives that I, I have discussed with you all. One would be a ground lease, which would provide space on the ground for these vendors. Two would be a license agreement where they would be renewed annually and provide an ability for them to have certain hours, certain type of operations. And then, the third option, which has two, two ways to go, would be a franchise agreement, we could look at an exclusive franchise agreement or a non-exclusive. But really, you know, right now, we're going to lay out what we have and then figure out where you want to go. If you want it to become a legislative policy, then I think there's several options to discuss. We will take that at the end of the discussion, re, revamp what we have, either suspend it, terminate it, or revise it. And with that, I will turn it over to Joe to discuss where we're at.
And before he starts there, Mr. City Manager, you said four items, ground rent, license, franchise agreement, what was the fourth?
So, the, it, right now we have an administrative program, which we're administering through basically a, a parking permit. So that's what's in place today. If you want to move this to a more legislative policy, we can do a ground lease. We can enter into a license agreement. Or we can do a franchise agreement, and that franchise can either be exclusive, where you would have, let's, either one per park, or one per the city, would be the highest bidder. Or you, we could do a non-exclusive franchise, which we then could, you know, open up to, as you heard this morning, there are many of these types of vendors in the city.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, City Manager, Mayor, council members, here today to present the voting program, which is actually known as the Commercial Watercraft Permit, let me get that exact word, I'm sorry. Commercial Recreation Watercraft Rental Permit Program. History of this came about, just, I think basically it started at the Yacht Club when we were getting an influx of commercial activity going on down there, so when they, they started looking at it, they wanted to really limit the space with, that we did that, and it kind of alleviated some of the issues at the Yacht Club. They also were seeing some commercial activity happening out of Horton Park. So they wanted to solve that and built it off of the city ordinance, which is chapter twelve and a half, section four, G three, which covers the commercial activity within a park and what can't be held in a park. So, right now currently, we have two parks that are part of this program, that's Rosen Boat Ramp and Horton Boat Ramp. Those are the only two that they're allowed to vend out of. We do have a pilot program, program going on at Serena Vista for kayak rentals. That is actually going on right now. And they do provide tours to the community. I actually went on one of those tours not knowing, but it was a great tour, they did a great job with it. Just to go over some of this, I'm not going to go over each of these individually, but the business owners have provided us with business licenses and their insurance. I did go look at all of their permit applications, and I was very pleased to see that every single one of them that has a current permit with us is a city resident, and they do have households within the city. So that, that was very encouraging to me, and is a great part of the criteria that if anything were developed, would be part of that. They do pay us a annual fee of up to one thousand eight hundred dollars. If they want to do monthly, it's a one hundred and fifty dollars per month. As I mentioned before, we did, we do have some limitations on how we have managed this program. And it says in kind of our slide, we take ownership of that as a staff and as, as park and recreation. We have criteria that we've required of the business owner, but we haven't held our end of the bargain, which is one of them, is we didn't background check, we asked to have them background checked, we haven't background checked our vendors. And the other one is, we really haven't had an administrative person or a professional person who is going to go and really work with the vendors to make this successful. So it's kind of, we put it out there, they provided their per, their information, and then we kind of just let them go do their, their opportunity, run their business. So it's created some issues and not understanding what's going on. So when I went down there, I, I could see there was a lot of boats, a lot of different things going on. I, I very much appreciate the comments regarding the charter vehicles in the morning and things of that stuff that we're probably not aware of. So that's another thing that tells me, maybe we need to work on staffing of our rangers and where we should put them in, and how we monitor our boat ramps, but that's, that's something we need to work on better as a department. So again, with the challenges, as I move forward through this, again, staff not monitoring as much as we probably should. One of the things the vendors have not done on their end is submitting what, what days and what times they plan on being at the park on a monthly basis, which was part of the agreement. Problem, obviously, we know with Horton Park is very limited, and they, they have been accruing a lot in there. A lot has been going on, and I drove by on, I think it was a Friday, and I looked over the edge, and I could see that boat there, the little banana boat, which isn't part of the agreement. So little things like that, again, it's just monitoring and making sure that we're holding them accountable as well as doing what we're supposed to be doing. We have been in peak season, so it's been extremely busy there, especially with the Yacht Club closed. And then the other thing I did notice is if you see the jet skis, they do line up, they line them up on the seawall, and they tie them up there, and I could see, and I understand that taking them in and out is infeasible for them, but it's difficult for other boat users to get in there to utilize those spaces to get in and out of their boats, and when they're getting ready to launch or to be put, put them back on their boat, their trailer. So, again, there's some things that we'd have to take into consideration. So some of the things that we were thinking about doing, we did serve a letter, just because we had some concerns, we wanted to reevaluate the program. We figured July thirty-first, all of the, the permits that I looked at for the jet ski rentals do end right at, towards the end of September. The kayak ones are a little bit over into November, so those would have to be, we can talk to them a little bit about that. We have to clarify a few things with Fish, FWC. We want to make sure that we define the ordinance that meets what we're doing right now, make sure we're hitting that target. And is there a true need for this program? You know, when I go out there, there are people, they, they are busy. There's a lot of people out there. So, there might be, I'm not sure if they're residents or not, we don't survey any of that, but we, they, there is a need out there of people using the facility. And then having a, assigning a dedicated staff member to oversee the program where they can really monitor for the effectiveness. We did just recently hire a business manager who could take on this as part of their responsibility and the staff in there, so that's a problem to assign for us. So with that, I can take any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. I guess I'll start the discussion. You know, for me personally, when you take a look at our boat ramps and our public parks, they're for the community as a whole. One thing that I don't want to do is develop a policy where it's going to hinder our residents, the availability to be able to go down, utilize the boat ramps, be able to park their boats, take their car back over, park it, get back in to their boat and then leave. To me, the boat ramps are for deployment of water vessels and the recovery of water vessels. I happened to see a trailer going down the road the other day, it had eight jet skis on it, one trailer. You know, and speaking with the city manager, one of the things that he had mentioned in our discussion is that maybe we limit how many trailers. Like I said, just the other day, I saw eight jet skis on one trailer. You know, so we got to keep that in mind. For me personally, our, our public boat ramps and our parks are, you know, for the public and not for the businesses. I'm a business owner myself. I try to promote small businesses when the opportunity presents itself. For me personally, I do not think that a business should be working in our parks. And I'll give you a couple of examples. We had a problem at the Yacht Club for a couple of the new council members about a year or so ago, where we had a, a boat rental company that would go there, bring all their boats in the morning, and line up along the seawall at the Yacht Club. It'd be eight, eight boats there. And waiting for their rentals, their patrons to come there, go through the thirty-minute orientation, whatever, you know, get them out. But what that did was that hampered any other boats from coming to that particular facility at that time. And then in the evening, we had the same problem. You know, so we put an ordinance in place or a policy that said that they weren't allowed to park there. For me personally, you know, the parks are, are for the public. As you saw in a couple of the pictures, you know, the jet skis get there, the paddle boards, and, you know, they start taking up space. What happens, you know, if we open this up, we can get boat rental companies there as well. And we'll have the same problem that we had at the Yacht Club. Many facilities throughout the city that these type of businesses utilize even today. Some of those examples, I know there's two boat rental companies down in Cape Harbor area. One of them's in the front of Rum Runners, the other one's in the back, in the basin area. Tarpon Point, same exact thing, we have rentals where they lease the space, they run their business out of there. It's a private facility. That, that particular private ownership will lease that space to those businesses. If you really think about it, eighteen hundred dollars a month to be able to run your business somewhere, that's pretty cheap. And, you know, basically what they're trying to do is utilize a public area to run their business out of there for a very minimal expense. Again, I, I like to promote businesses where we can. But for me, there should be no type of business running out of our parks. You know, if we open this door, what would, either our boat ramp parks or our regular parks, what, what would deter a car detail individual, maybe that waxes cars or waxes boat? Set up a tent on a parking space in one of our parks, they're open for business. You know, I don't want to, I don't want to go down that rabbit hole personally. I think we will just, this, this could compound into a larger problem later on. Once, once you crack that door open, you know, you just don't know where we'll end up. So for me personally, I think there should be a, you know, we should have an ordinance in place that specifies exactly what you can and can't do at, at our public parks. I did reach out to the county, I didn't hear back from them, to see what their policy was. And I also spoke with the mayor of Sanibel. They have a provision, an ordinance, that you're allowed to launch your boats and recover your boats, but you're not allowed to run a business at any of their facilities. Very similar to what I just mentioned, so I know Sanibel has a policy in place where they don't allow that. So that's the, the position I take on it. I think there are opportunities for our businesses throughout the city to either rent a space, there's land available to buy on the waterfront. Just want to keep in mind that our state legislation, I believe it was last year, passed the home business policy or law. So theoretically, a rental company, if you own a home on the water and you only have a certain amount of employees, you can run that business out of your home. So, that is also available to these types of smaller businesses, where they could actually run that business out of their home. With their neighbors like that, probably not, but unfortunately, the state legislation passed, passed the law that small businesses, as long as they meet a certain criteria, can work out of their home. So that's my position on this, on this matter. Councilmember Cosson?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree that boat ramps are for the community as a whole and for residents, but I'm a resident and I don't have a boat. So what is someone like me going to do if I want to go out on the water? So I think there's no way of even knowing if a boat is rented or personal. So I don't think we could even enforce a complete ban on these businesses. We definitely need to clarify our policy, we just saw that half of our provisions aren't being followed, right, in the current program. So I would want to look at a franchise agreement. What would that look like?
Well, if, if we provide a franchise agreement to them, or to one, if, if it was an exclusive franchise similar to what we have with LCEC or Waste Pro, you're providing basically the market of our residents to one vendor for the right for current residents and all future residents to have that business. If you were to look at a, and typically that's a, they pay a franchise fee for that right. Percent of revenues is, is typical. If you look at a non-exclusive franchise, it would not be exclusive to one business. So if you think of kind of communications, although we don't have communication franchises anymore, we used to, there could be multiple vendors providing similar service only with competition, and they also pay a franchise fee for that right to have access to the business in our community. With that franchise agreement, there is, there would be some right given to utilize city property. There, there would be constraints within that. Below that is the, the license agreement, which is more of like an annual license, or, you know, it could, could be a multi-year license. That does not provide exclusivity, does not give them quiet rights of enjoyment, is, is terminable and/or renewable, typically has a fixed fee amount, not a, not like a franchise that has a a percent of revenues, but it's much, much less of a partnership. It's, it's more just the ability to utilize. And then below that, or depending on how you want to look at it, the lease option would be, okay, vendor A, you have this many square foot to do your business on the park, similar to what we have with the boathouse. So that's actually a ground lease, they have specific amount of land to, to perform their business. You could do that at all the parks and give them a specific area and have lease provisions that discuss terms and financial considerations. Open to discussion. And, you know, we, right now, like I said, we have an administrative program, which is basically a boat, boat. which is basically a boat, boat ramp parking permit for commercial use.
Okay, so I could see any of those programs working. We would need to look at the details, but to just outright ban it, I think would be a mistake. Thank you.
And before I go to Councilmember Shepherd, I just want to reiterate, my comments weren't to, to deter a commercial business, whether it's a boat rental company, jet ski rental, whether it's a seawall company, Boat Toe US or whoever. I think the ramps, they should be able to utilize. I have no problem with that. What I have a problem with is when they set up camp next to the ramp at the seawall or the, you know, the dock there. That's what I have a problem with running the business.
Thank you for clarifying.
Utilizing the ramps, I don't, I don't have a problem with that. I think the commercial permit program, that's a great way to, to, to govern, you know, what exactly they can and can't do. I'm not for just banning the, the usage of the ramp itself. Councilmember Shepherd.
What I would like to see us do is come up with an idea that benefits everyone because these small business owners, we represent them just like we represent the, the private home that's trying to launch their boat. And what we don't want to do is we don't want to encourage people to run their businesses under the radar. What I mean by that is I lived here for over 25 years and I've saw the city put strict regulation to the point of businesses not doing the proper thing because they couldn't do the proper thing. They would be forced out of the city. So then what they would do is they would operate under the radar. So they wouldn't letter their vehicle, they wouldn't put their license number on it. They wouldn't operate it properly. Doesn't look professional, doesn't look good for our city. So the problem I see with this is, is how do we know who the business is? Well, what happens is the businesses that are running professionally and properly, they're going to stand out and they're going to be the target. But the business that's running under the radar, they're going to be able to continue to use their ramp and nobody knows they're a business. So are they really running professionally or are they protecting our citizens as a safe environment? This is what I don't want to encourage. So what I strongly believe is that every time we, we put, you know, we just, we just can't be the city of no. We have to come up with an answer because we have to support everyone. By supporting small business, that small business is going to grow and it's going to become an asset in our city. So I think we need to come up with some ideas. So one idea I have is we have parks, there's one along the river, J.C. Park. So we have J.C. Park, there's not a boat ramp there. But what if we were to put some floating docks there? And create, I don't know, I mean, say 10, 10 slips. And we put them out there for lease for these businesses. And to make it fair, you know, some big organization can't come, come along and, and lease them all because that's not our intent. Our intent is to encourage small business to grow. And we put a price on each one of these slips. And it covers the cost of our, our floating dock. And it encourages business. It alleviates the traffic at our parks that have the ramps. So, so now citizens that want to go boating, they're not competing with a local business. And let me tell you, some of these local businesses are, some are, are just everyday citizens or even city employees that have a little side job of chartering their boat to take people fishing. That's a business. They're going to the boat ramp. Do they stand out? Do they have a big sign on their truck or on their boat? No. So we're not going to be able to identify that. Like I said, we're only going to identify the businesses that are really investing in being professional and growing in our city, and we don't want to stop that. So I think that we have locations in the city, like the park I pointed out, where we can create a magnet to that park, where the businesses that lease these locations become a drawl to that park. It alleviates the traffic at the other parks. And I think it's just a win-win. I, I'm more for helping everyone involved and not excluding anyone. And I think identifying which ones are businesses and which ones aren't. I'm going to repeat myself. We're only going to hurt the organizations that want to be the professional business and grow in our city. And we don't want to be a hindrance of that. We want to encourage that. So let's think outside the box. Let's find some locations in the city. I think a lot of these businesses that want to be professional would have no problem with renting one of these slips where they could go to one of our parks, launch their boat, jet skis, whatever they are, drive them to this other park location. They can take their trailer and truck and go back to wherever their other facility is that they have. And now they're not taking up our parking spots. And what are we doing? We're helping the local business. We're giving more space to our citizens, for their families. And we're encouraging business to flourish in our city. And we're creating a magnet for another park location so that we can have future investment in these other parks as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Hayden.
Mayor, I'm glad you clarified because a lot of what you said would probably be in direct conflict with our public-private partnerships that we already have at our parks now. The new J.C. Park plan does include docks when we eventually get there, but obviously that'll have to go through a permitting process to establish anything that might exist there. First off, if there's anybody unlicensed working at any of our parks, they need to go and they need to go now. If we need to be out there today to get rid of anybody that's working unlicensed based on your comments, then they need to go. We, you know, we don't want to hurt the, the businesses that are trying to do it right. I'm for working out some sort of solution, whether it's a franchise agreement that's exclusive or non-exclusive that allows maybe these businesses to operate with two slips or two spots at Horton, a few at Rosen. You know, we didn't mention D and D, is, is there a way to work out solutions there? No one's mentioned, we're in extenuating circumstances now after the hurricane. A lot of the boat ramps are closed. We don't know when the yacht club's going to reopen again. So we need to come up with solutions that help these businesses that are trying to do it legitimately and work through our parks. You know, we, we don't want to restrict the public from getting into our boat ramp. That's the last thing that we want to have happen. But it sounds like we're on a pathway that we can come up with, with agreements for those licensed businesses to work out of our, our boat ramps. Not necessarily putting everybody at the same ramp, but working out a way. If, if Rosen is underutilized, working out of there as well. Thanks, Mayor.
Councilmember Cummings.
Thank you. As a business owner myself, I'm, I'm understanding what the mayor is stating as well as Councilman Shepherd. I pay a lease and it's very common for businesses to pay a lease. And it's actually good for the city. You know, we, we, we need that money to be coming in through the city. If we did this, what it's going to do is going to open up a can of worms. Someone like me then would want to go to the boat ramp and put my flatboat out and put people out on Astro to work out. It will create a problem with other people having ideas on how to make more money. So I'm not in favor of a franchise agreement. I feel what Shepherd had stated, Councilman Shepherd, that is a great idea. We can make these docks accessible, rent them out, a lease agreement, put some kind of term together. So it, it is a, a business now. I understand that we have had a lot of heartache. Anybody, I get it. I get it from the pandemic to, it's been one thing after another. And I am all about small businesses. You know, small business is the heart of America. It keeps us beating and we have to keep you going. And I know we can probably put something together for you guys that we can come up into some kind of agreement. But I feel just, you know, utilizing the park, once again, we're going to have a lot of people coming and saying, hey, if they can do it, I want it too. You know, so I'm in agreements with you, Mayor. There, there has to be some kind of restrictions and we can get creative, kind of like what Councilman Shepherd said, to come up with something that can help the small businesses keep your boats, your jet skis going for rental, but also putting it together as a business through our parks so we can establish more commercial property here. I mean, that's just, you know, you know, we, we have to pay the taxes as well. And I think, you know, they, they should too. That's just how I feel. Once again, let's try to keep this streamlined. We can't show favoritism because it's just not good. And I think you guys will understand that. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Councilmember Stanky.
So thank you. Horton Park is in my district. And I believe some of this coming to a head today began when I brought a number of citizen complaints a few weeks ago, almost a month ago now, from the citizens that live in the communities off of Everest that use the park as a destination to walk to, bike to, take their dogs to. And, and their words to me were is that we're not being allowed peace and enjoyment of the park. I can speak relatively knowledgeable about this subject because from 2000 to 2008, I owned three watersport companies. And we were housed on Fort Myers Beach. And I know all of the watersports vendors, Sanibel Island, Fort Myers Beach. And I understand the comings and goings of a day in the watersports business. And so for me, it's, it's two issues. One is, are our parks designed for peaceful enjoyment of the citizens? Or are they meant as commercial venues? In 2002, the state of Michigan approached me and asked me to participate in a test of bringing commercial business into their state park system. And so in 2002, three and four, we took a piece of our business up to the South State Park in Higgins Lake, Michigan. We were extremely successful on Fort Myers Beach. We were extremely successful in Michigan. But it caused such a rift from the citizens stating that operating commercial businesses out of their state park system was not something that they wanted. The program was discontinued. And I think what we're seeing is, is citizens saying those parks are supposed to be for us and not to conduct business out of, that interrupts our opportunity to enjoy them peacefully. I like, has also been stated, have no problem with the ramps being used to drop a vessel in the water or to retrieve a vessel. And so for that fishing boat captain or that tour boat captain that meets their customers there, drops the boat in the water, they climb onboard the boat, the trailer gets put in a parking space that they are paying for, and the captain leaves the dock and is gone for the day, where they're doing their business is on the water. They're not doing their business in the park. They're simply using the ramp to deploy what allows them to do business on the water. The trouble with wave runners is most people don't want to take the wave runner out for an eight-hour or a 10-hour ride. And so it's not a matter of dropping the wave runner in the water, going back to wherever you normally keep your trailer with the wave runner on it. And then eight hours coming back and pulling the wave runner back in and taking it back to your base of operations. It's a totally different business. And it requires the, the ability to leave the wave runner in the water, switch passengers on and off, sign release forms, all the thing that goes along with the actual wave runner rental business. That is typically a 30 to 60-minute business. Unless you're going to take someone on a tour where maybe you're gone for two hours and you take a half a dozen people behind the guide and, and whatnot. But to facilitate receiving a customer, filling out the forms, checking their age, providing the test required if they're underage so that they are allowed to operate the vessel, all of that then really means that the park is the place of doing business. And for me, that's the question, is do we want businesses in our parks? And so I've said in other situations where if you do for one, you've got to do for another. Well, let's say I make some really nice jewelry. Well, I want to set up a tent, 10 by 10 tent, and I want to sell jewelry to people that come to the park. Well, how can you do it for a wave runner business, but you can't do it for a jewelry company? And so I absolutely agree that we need to be a how city, not a yes or no city. And one of the suggestions as, as it relates to, you know, setting aside space at a facility that would be suitable for it, should be something that we could consider, could consider. But just moving it from the yacht club to Horton and Rosen Park in 2020, for me, that was just kicking the can down the road or throwing the hot potato someplace else. The issue still becomes, do we want to have businesses operate out of a park that's designed for our citizens to go and peacefully enjoy? So I think it's more the nature of the business that is the issue. If it, if it were, you know, a business where you, you brought the six wave runners and you dropped them off that morning, you signed up for everybody, they were gone for the day and you, and you took the, the sixth place trailer back to where it normally is housed, it would be a totally different issue. I don't think anybody would be, would be complaining about anything. But it's that, it's that in and out all day long, all the activity. And if you go to Google right now and you Google Horton Park, you will see many of the companies that are doing this business with their company's dot on Horton Park. This is where our business is. I don't think that was the intention when we offered a permit to allow this, if you will, regular activity. There's, there is a boat rental company right where our water treatment plant is, in that marina, the small marina that's right there. If you want to rent a boat for a day, you go there and you pick it up there. There's boat rental companies that, that operate out of the boathouse and Walker's Marine. They get, pick up their boats there, they go out for the day, they come back. Now, the complaint is that if someone's going to operate a wave runner, they got to get out beyond the manatee zone. And so by the time they get from those marinas out to where they can operate the vessel in a way that they were looking forward to, it's time to come home. So I get it. And so certainly the shoreline of Cape Coral is a tough place to operate that kind of a business. And any business, no matter what type of business it is, you've got to find the right place with the right accommodation to allow the business to operate without taking, if you will, the rights of someone else away. And that's where, that's where the rub is right now, is that citizens are saying it's taking our, our expectation of peaceful enjoyment of a city park, taking that away by allowing commercial business to operate within that park. So I would be in favor of finding another solution, but I am not in favor of letting it continue the way it is right now in Horton Park. Thank you.
Councilmember Law.
Oh, yeah. It appears that Councilman Stanky stole my script. That's all I got. A lot of the points that he made, that I was going to make, he made in much better fashion. I did not own a watersports company. I think I, I do want to make clear though, I agree with the mayor, that there's, there's a distinction between not allowing that there's a distinction between not allowing the use at all and allowing it in a manner where they're coming in and utilizing the ramp as I believe we originally intended, rather than hosting it, setting up and having these, these employees there on a daily basis and allowing the jet skis to more or less dock a significant number along the seawall. Another point that I wanna make is we're not necessarily prohibiting or hindering this small business from being able to operate. I think what we're doing here, and it's been said before, by the existence of these businesses in other fashions and private marinas, where in essence, we would be limiting their profit margin, which I don't think that's the intent of the city, to basically allow them to utilize the public parks to lower their rent, so to speak, that they otherwise would be paying in a private marina, like many of the other businesses. So, to answer Councilmember Cosin's question of where she would go to utilize these, and she doesn't have a boat, there's plenty of boat rental companies in existence that operate in that manner. But other than that, I would agree with what Councilmember Stanky said. Thank you.
Madam City Clerk, could someone put this up on the projector for me? And I think, as a part of this discussion, try to come up with a short term and long term compromise, maybe where we could possibly help the business. I think Councilmember, if I recall, it was Councilmember Hayden had mentioned this. What this is, is an aerial view of D and D Boat Ramp. And when you take a look at this, you know, this particular picture here, on the far left and the far right, there are ramps at D and D Boat Ramp for deployment or recovery of any type of water vessels. I do know that the private business up there that are renting from us, they charge $10 a day for any type of trailer parking. And we get a portion of that $10. And as you can tell in this picture, this is just a Google picture of this particular facility. It's pretty broad. It's pretty open. And during this particular picture, it's not utilized that much. So, maybe in the short term, that we could provide some type of an agreement with businesses at the D and D facility, that they could utilize this facility. I think very little residents probably use D and D Boat Ramp at this particular time. Now, if we improve this later on, that may be time for a future discussion. Again, that may be a long term type discussion that we would have for this facility. But in the short term, we may be able to allow businesses to utilize this. And that business agreement that the city manager had mentioned, I don't think it's just for jet skis. It could be for any business. It could be, you know, for a seawall company that, you know, can put their barge in the water or take it back out. There's a multitude of types of businesses could utilize this facility. What is most important to me in these businesses is number one, I think they need to have a business license in our city. They must be insured. And they must sign an agreement with the city where we're not responsible for any injuries that may occur. I think that's very important because if you have one of these smaller businesses that are working out of one of our city-owned parcels and we don't have the proper, if they don't have the proper insurance and we don't have the proper agreement, boy, we are holding ourselves wide open in liability. And I noticed that no one had brought that up. So, I wanted to make sure I had mentioned that. I wanna make sure that we protect ourselves. Because if an individual goes down to one of our facilities where they're working out of and we don't have that proper documentation or the proper insurance has been provided, we're gonna be liable. And, you know, thank God, we haven't had that type of a claim up to this point. But that surely exists. So, I wanna make sure that, you know, we protect ourselves. And that's a part of this process. So, I just wanted to throw out, this may be a facility in the short term, that we could allow these businesses to work out of. You know, number one, if they're licensed in the city. Number two, that they have the proper licensing and insurance and there's the appropriate hold harmless agreement for the city that they enter into. So, I just wanted to throw that out there and show the picture there. Councilmember Shepherd.
Yes, I agree with almost everything that every council member has brought up so far. What we have to look at, I'll give you my own experience. I don't have a lot of free time with doing this job and my other jobs. So, when I do, I sit down with my family and they're like, Dad, what can we do? It's the weekend, let's do something. And I'm gonna tell you, and this really happens, there's not a whole lot to do in Cape Coral. We're always going other places. Councilmember brought up rental boats and rental jet skis and all. A lot of that, where it's done efficiently, you gotta go outside the city. And I wanna try to keep it in the city. But even more, what I want is, I wanna create all these different things for our city. And I think there needs to be a balance. So, I'll use the example of the Yacht Club. We have a business there that has nothing to do with the park. It's a restaurant. And when we signed a lease for that restaurant to be there, there were people that complained that live in that neighborhood. And they said, oh, I, you know, I go to that park with my family and I've been there for this many years and now there's no parking. The restaurant's taken up all the parking. I'm just giving you history. I sat right in this room and heard people complain about that. And it's true, the restaurant took about a third of the parking spaces, I would guess maybe a third of the parking spaces in the park were for the restaurant. So, there was an impact to the neighboring citizens that utilized the park. I believe that council, when all these situations, has to look at the situation and we have to have a balance. I also know that we need a lot of amenities that we don't have. And what I would say to some citizens that complain is there are a lot of citizens that enjoy that restaurant and say, wow, we need more amenities like this. So, what I'm getting at is there's a price. And the price is, we can either, we can either do away with P3s and bringing commercial establishments to our park, do away with it completely, and just raise our taxes and build all these amenities. I don't think any of us are gonna wanna pay, raise taxes so that we can create things to do for our citizens. So, I really like the idea that I brought forward of the floatable docks at a park that has minimal traffic right now, other than people walking their dogs and walking to the park, where adding something that, I know my family, if there was jet ski rental or boat rental right at that park and I only had two or three hours to take my children somewhere for something to do, wow, I don't have to go over the bridge. It's right here. So, instead of talking about it, what are, I would like to ask the city manager, if something like that is possible, if something like that would take years to accomplish, is that something that we could accomplish very quickly? Is it a tremendous cost? Would that cost be paid for by the different businesses that would rent these slips? So, would the cost initially be covered? And can we use the profits, once that's established, to create other amenities at that park that we might not have the money for? I remember that park at our retreat, we saw some great ideas of amphitheater and some other things they drew in that were just ideas. But I think every idea, every, has to start somewhere. So, it starts with creating a draw to the location, getting people used to going there for something, creating something that brings in revenue to help pay for it. But what I don't wanna do is, I do not wanna say we don't want to bring business to our parks because I think it's the perfect answer to getting some of the things we need for our city without the taxpayers having to bear the burden. But I do think there's a balance. I believe we have to look at every scenario and we have to balance it out because we do represent all the citizens of Cape Coral, not just some. So, when I sat in this room many years ago and people were complaining about the parking from the restaurant at the Yacht Club, that council had, they had to balance that out. And what they said was, you know, we have a big group of citizens that want that restaurant, that want that feature because they had to go elsewhere out of the city for that type of atmosphere. And we also have people that just wanna use the park. So, I just want us all to have an open mind. I think there's a balance for everything. But if the city manager, I don't wanna put him on the spot, but maybe he can elaborate on that idea, if something like that is possible, if it's something that would take years and permitting and things like that, or if it's something that we can accomplish at a minimal cost and for that cost to be covered by these different agreements that we could design. Thank you.
Councilmember Law.
Yeah, I think, I think that's the whole point of the discussion here today is to kind of work through and see whether we wanna do something like that or how we proceed forward. So, as it exists, I don't think that it's working in the way that we intended it. So, if we did wanna basically do something like that, if we intended it originally set out to be a, for it to be a private-public partnership, that's not how it's working currently. So, for example, the Yacht Club and the Boathouse, that's, I believe, one of the city's largest revenue generators that we have, which isn't the case here when we're talking about a couple hundred dollars for a rental permit. So, if we did wanna allow that more permanent existence in our parks in a direct way, maybe this will be the forum to discuss that if we as a council collectively wanted to do that, if I understand Councilmember Shepherd correctly. I mean, if that's, if that's the direction we're heading, I think that's the whole reason we're having this discussion is so that we can provide that input so that they can maybe craft something to bring it forward to us in a way that makes sense. To me, currently, the way that it works, it doesn't make sense. A couple hundred dollars to allow them to come in and set up camp there, it's not really conducive. It lends to that riff that Councilmember Stanky had mentioned with the public and the private, that the parks as they exist currently are meant for public use. And so, if we wanna change that direction, but be more specific in outlining what it is and whether that be a lease or something so that we have a defined parameter for one or two particular vendors and how that looks, whether we wanna throw floating docks up and allow them for some particular use in the form of a lease in partnership with the city shore, I think that's the whole point. But if that's the direction that we collectively wanna do, then let's have that discussion and move this forward. That would be my, I wouldn't be opposed to that if that's the collective desire of council. I guess that's all I've got currently. Thank you.
Mr. City Manager.
I think there's been a good discussion. Several things are happening here and some of them were picked up on. One, we have limited amount of waterfront activation in the community. That was also a major point that came out during the Parks Master Plan. Our community wanted us to activate every bit of waterfront we had because although we were the waterfront wonderland, there's not really that many opportunities for people to get to the water and enjoy the water. So, that's headwind number one. Headwind number two is the Yacht Club Boat Ramp is out of service. So, you have all that traffic migrating up to Horton. The original ten of this program was to control the parking in the parking lot. So, there was five vendors, 10 vendors, each of them bringing six, seven boat trailers, jet ski trailers. And so, now when a resident went there, there was competing uses. So, the intent of the parking permit was to work with the vendors to provide the business, but allow time and space for the residential recreational users to be able to launch and the other businesses that were mentioned as well. So, the, I think the intent was to make sure that there was room and access for someone who needed to leave a trailer there that was enjoying it to take their family out or themselves out. There was room, and this way, it wasn't consumed 100% by these small businesses. So, with the boat ramp being closed, all of that recreational use that otherwise would have been distributed around four saltwater boat ramps now is being dispersed around three. In addition to that, March is typically our biggest season that we see for waterfront usage. And so, you have a lot of people breaking their boats out. We don't have cold fronts, we're not in the summer rain, summer thunderstorms, and the tourists are still here. So, you have a high amount of people wanting to get out on the water. So, all three of those things are all kinda working against us right now in this moment. When it comes to parks, if we had a single purpose park, like a Diamond Sport Athletic Field, there's not a lot of competition for the use there and there's not a lot of chafing of the, of the different user groups. But as, as we tried to do and as we saw on the master plan, the goal was to start turning all of our parks into multi-purpose parks. So, we've added playgrounds, we've added walking paths. We've started to turn any park that we had that was a single purpose into a multi-purpose. Well, when you do that, now you have different user groups wanting their right to use that park, bumping up against a different user group wanting their right. Parking becomes an issue, lighting, timing of usage, who's gonna be able to use the pickleball court? Who's, in this case, who's gonna be able to use the boat ramp? And so, that, in addition, as we've expanded some of our parks to allow different and alternate uses, is creating some user group issues. And one group's expectations are not being met or being infringed upon by another's. And so, that's what we're really trying to balance here. What I heard from council is, I did not hear any clear indication that anybody wanted it to stop. I think the original intent of this program, as we've discussed, was to control one type of user group so it didn't overburden the entire park. And I think what council's indication was, we don't have any necessarily disagreement on the, what we would consider the incidental use of the launching and recovery. So, when any commercial business, the mayor rattled off, I think, a few of them, when any of them go to use a boat ramp, it sounds like we are all, both administration and council, comfortable with, whether you're a marine contractor, whether you're a paddle sports company, whether you're individual recreational, or you're any type of commercial activity. If you are having an incidental use where you're just launching and recovering your vessel, that's okay. But anything beyond that, storage of equipment, signing up of agreements, any of that activity taking place on the park right now, under the guise of this parking permit, it appears that right now, there is not a comfort level with that. And we need to find alternatives. And so, I think what we would like to do, so I know the Parks and Rec Director and I had a discussion, he would like to take 90 days to basically revamp this and come up with ideas. Specifically, I, as it relates to J.C. Park, there was a question on whether or not we could do that quickly. I will tell you that anything that you do with marine construction, floating docks, regular docks, it is absolutely a regulated activity through the Army Corps and there's nothing happening quickly, unfortunately. There's a process that they have to do for endangered species. Now, if there was a way to do that without having docks and without having leased space, possibly that's a way to do it quickly, where they would just kinda pull up to the shoreline. But that would have to be researched as well. But I know on its face right now, if the idea was as presented, putting docks out there that we would make available for leases, that is definitely a regulated activity under the Corps and would require a permit. Is there something in between that, that maybe accomplishes the same thing? Possibly. There are several opportunities. The mayor, you threw up D and D. We have Bernice Brayden at the base of the bridge. We have J.C. Park. You know, realistically, any, any place to activate the waterfront, you know, could be an opportunity. As Councilmember Stanky pointed out, if it's a jet ski rental and it's an hour, if it takes an hour to get out, or it takes an hour to get through the manatee speed zone, it's not really gonna be very beneficial for the business. And so, if the idea is to keep the business successful and allow them to stay and grow in the community, that kinda limits the opportunities of where they can go. in the community, that kind of limits the opportunities of where they can go. I, I think there's enough here for us to look at this program, kind of revamp it, put some tighter parameters on what can and cannot be done in the park. The parking permit, I think, from a liability perspective, really only, only restricted their ability to park there, didn't authorize any use, I think. So I don't believe that, that in itself has opened us up to any type of liability. We will be mindful of anything moving forward, that we don't do anything that will, will increase our risk drastically. I didn't hear anybody say shut it down immediately, so we are going to continue on as we progress. As long as it's okay with you all, we'll come back in 90 days. I will continue to communicate with you all on the, on the things we're considering and how, how it's shaping up. If, if there was a dream for the city, last year you all appropriated funds to purchase land and make a boat ramp in every single freshwater basin available to all of our residents. I think the goal here, what we should be looking at for the future, for the next 50, 100 years is, and we've been approached by the Marine Contractors Association, is basically establishing a boat ramp that is available or a lay-down yard, some, some type of waterfront activity that is designed and designated for commercial-type activities. Yes, that will probably be expensive because you have to buy the waterfront property and then we have to build it out, but that will separate the user groups. That will allow the residents and the, and the community that need to, to just launch and recover a boat at a boat ramp to enjoy the, the ones we have today, but a new one, forward-thinking, would be strictly, you'd have to own a business, operate a business, licensed in the city, and then you can utilize, you know, that facility. There is a similar one. Lee County operates on Pine Island, which is commercial use only during the week, and then on Saturday and Sunday, it's open for recreational use because the, the businesses aren't there. So it becomes kind of a floating additional amenity on the weekend. So that is something I think we should explore as we look forward into the future, how we provide an, an opportunity or an amenity like that for our, our marine businesses. But if it's okay, we'll take all this feedback and come back after hiatus with some revisions, and I'll continue to work with you all on, on where we're going.
Just one quick question, and I guess I'll go down the line for each council member. You said in your, in your comments there, Mr. City Manager, that you're looking for direction to continue as is or to terminate the practice that we have been providing here recently? My understanding that staff had sent out a letter to terminate. So I think it is important for council to give staff that direction. They've sent out a letter to terminate those type of activities. So is that the direction we want to go in, in the next 90 days while they are doing their evaluation and developing a policy? Or do we want to continue as is and allow the companies to work there like they have been? So I think maybe we'll start down here with Councilmember Cosden, and we'll go down that, 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 well, go ahead. Do you want to speak first?
Yeah, please.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So just a couple things. As, as this would go for consideration, 90 days, however, whatever, I would like, first of all, if I heard it correctly, it was said that the way that operations are happening now were not the intent of the parking permits. So what that would mean is, is the way that business is being conducted today is outside of the intention of the program that was put in place.
That is correct. We have, there is an enforcement issue, and that is one of the things that we've discussed needs to be, in, in this interim, needs to be looked at and enforced.
Okay. So I would not be in favor of just allowing things to keep going like they're going. I believe it needs to be enforced the way the program was originally put in place, and now it's been stretched to the point that it is today. The second thing is I wanted to make sure that it was reiterated, what our interim city manager said early on, is that in, in parks and boat launches across the state and across the country, they typically have revenue in three ways: entering the park, launching a vessel, and parking. At this moment in time, no one is being discriminated against, whether it be commercial or private citizens, to launch their vessels anywhere there's a boat ramp. There's only an expectation that if you, after launch, leave your, your vehicle and your trailer in a parking space, that you have to pay for that parking space. Whether you are a citizen or a business makes no difference. And so we're not telling anyone that they can't launch or retrieve a vessel, commercial or personal. It's just that you can't run a business out of, of that park just because you have a parking permit. And so there's many companies, our, our seawall companies, our, when I have to have my boat go in for service, my boat company of choice isn't on the water. So they show up with a trailer, my boat gets put on the trailer, and off they go. No one's complaining about that type of usage. So, and the last thing I would share with you is, is that I mentioned earlier that I engaged in a test by putting business in a, in a park setting. What I had to do to do that, to agree to participate in the test, is I had to supply everything required for me to do business there. I had to put the 200-foot dock in that had to go in the lake in May and then pull it out in September, because when the lake froze over, it caused problems with docks. So anyone had to do that if they were going to have a vessel on the lake. It was their responsibility to provide the capacity to put it in, take it out, tie it up there. And so I, I don't know that we should be in the business of providing the equipment and the facility at our expense for the business to run out of, if that's a business they choose to engage in. And the last thing is, to Councilmember Shepherd's point, right now, like it or not, we have a blank slate at the Yacht Club. We've talked about beach expansion there. Some of the most successful wave runner sailboat, paddleboat, paddleboard operations are surf launch. So as we look at the design, which we are, maybe that becomes the venue for an operation like that, but then you're going to have to be selective because there will only be a certain amount of space, and, and that's where you'd look at that franchise agreement and to the, you know, the highest bidder, if we want to put a water sports business like they do on Sanibel, Fort Myers Beach, you name it, we could choose to do that, and that would be the point that it happens. It doesn't happen anywhere on Captiva. It happens at South Seas Resort. There's a, there's a choice of where that type of business will be allowed in that municipality. And so we do have options. We've got a blank slate in the Yacht Club, and if we want to incorporate that to have more things to do in our city, it would be a surf launch. You wouldn't have to worry about going in, going out. Yeah, you'd have to get the big wheelie trailers to bring them back up on shore for the night, but that's, that's a solution we have, and none of them, just like interim city manager mentioned, none of them are going to be short, short solutions. There are going to be long solutions because of what it's going to take to get any of those options completed. Thank you.
Before I go into Councilmember Long, Mr. City Manager, can you, can you explain a little bit the termination letter that was sent out?
I will let staff, who's communicated with the vendors, know, explain what was in the letter and what, what it said.
Hi, Lucille Valencourt Crater, Superintendent. I just want to explain the letter that went out, and a majority of the short-term annual contracts that are made with these vendors, they're annual renewals. It's a one-year, so a majority of them expired at the end of July 31st. So the letter, because we had complaints and we needed to monitor the program and revisit the program and evaluate the program, so the letter that went out said, as of July 31st, we are stopping the program to evaluate the program to see how we can improve it. It wasn't terminating business per se. Now, we also have a commercial trailer permit that anyone can purchase currently that is not part of this program. So any commercial business can currently purchase a permit for the year and launch at our boat ramps. So there are, I believe, three vendors of the current vendors that expire in September, and we would work with them for their contract that they did. But these contracts we have in place are for a year.
And July 31st of 2023?
Was the bulk, correct.
These notices have been sent out that...
To give them plenty of notice that we are evaluating the program for the future.
All right. And I think it's, it's worth mentioning, the 90 days that the city manager is asking for will come before that.
And that'll come before that, yes.
Yep. Okay. Councilmember Long?
Well, they would come before that, but I was going to make the clarifying point that Councilmember Steinkie did before we voted, was that irrespective of that, they're currently not operating within the confines of the intentions of that. So any vote allowing it to continue during that period of those 90 days is us saying that we're allow, we're allowing them to continue operating outside of the intended regulations until we find a solution. Is that, is that a correct interpretation? As it, as it exists, it's outside, they're operating out, as far as being onsite, operating outside of what we intended, under these permits.
Park staff has advised me that some, as we sit here today, I can't, I don't want to...
I'm not saying these individuals in particular, I'm just saying there are individuals...
There are some of them who, who are not operating within the, the confines of the parking program, permit program. So they are going to enforce, if continuing to allow them to operate, knowing that there's going to be changes forthcoming, will come with an enforcement action on staff's behalf.
So I would be okay continuing to allow them to, to operate within the parameters that are already defined? So if there are individuals that are operating outside of those, I couldn't support allowing that to continue for 90 days until we figure out whether they're going to be. I guess that's the only clarification I would like to make. Thank you.
Yeah, and I agree. I think, you know, before we go down, to give staff the direction, for me, it sounds like the termination agreement was, you know, pretty clear between now and July 31st. Basically, put them on notice. We don't know what the direction's going to be. We're going to develop a new policy and, and probably implement it on August 1st, it sounds like to me, you know, if, if we can get it completed by then. But I agree with Councilmember Long. You know, we have an agreement with these particular companies, and we have to make sure that they're conforming to the, whatever the agreement states. And if they are working outside of those parameters, I think that's staff's responsibility to make sure that doesn't occur while we are trying to develop a new policy. And that's how, and I think our vote should be, is twofold, you know, are we going to compel them to work within the confines of the agreement between now and July 31st, while staff develops a new policy, and then we as a council will develop that or approve that policy? To me, that's how I see the vote when we go down the list. Councilmember Cummings?
Yeah, I'm in agreement. I guess the, the major question, we go back to kind of what you brought up earlier, Mayor, is do they have an active business license and are they insured to continue with this?
Yes, they are. Every single one of them is.
Our, our Parks Director has confirmed that they all have an active license and are residents of the city as well.
Insurance, that was the key.
Yes, they all are insured.
Do you have city lists for the insurance?
Okay. Okay. Is there any other discussion? Councilmember Steinkie?
So what are we going to agree to or not agree to?
Well, I think that the question is, do we hold the businesses accountable for the agreement itself between now and July 31st? And staff would have to enforce those particular businesses to make sure that they are working within the confines of the agreement between now and July 31st, and then hopefully we'll develop a policy before then, moving forward after July 31st. So I think, you know, do we want staff to hold the businesses accountable within the agreement moving forward as of today, in the interim, while we develop hopefully a new policy within this 90-day period?
My answer is yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd?
Yes.
I'm a yes.
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 Give you the direction you're looking for, Mr. City Manager?
It does, and, and I think, just to add further clarification, I didn't hear anybody indicating that an exclusive franchise where we would have basically one watersport vendor would be the way to go. What I heard clearly was that we were looking to work with the businesses and come up with some solutions. So just so you know, when we come back, that one is going to be off the table. And I also didn't hear anybody say that they want to do have a li- a, a land lease providing spaces on the ground. So we're going to be left with either an administrative policy, which is what we have revamped, or a license, or a non-exclusive franchise agreement. So depending on where we go, those are the three options I see based on the discussion.
Councilmember Hayden?
Yeah, I think it's all about enforcing points three and four. Transactions can be taken place at the park, and you must show proof of a business license and insurance. And that's, if we need to do a sweep of the place to make sure that both of those are being followed, then, then let's do it. That's what needs to happen now. You've got your 90 days to develop the rest of it.
Councilmember Steinkie?
Thank you. I wanted to just make sure, I don't think anything is off the table in that 90-day period. And because one of the things that Mayor said a little earlier is that everything has to be taken on its own merits, and so a park that's this big may be, be able to accommodate something different than a park that's this big. So I don't think anything should be off the table right now as Parks looks at, you know, where are the reasonable places where a business like this could operate? And in this location, this is the way that it could be done, but in this location, it could be done a different way. And so it may end up being location-specific as to how you'd solve the problem and make the majority of, of people happy, if you would.
Councilmember Shepherd?
Yeah, I agree. I don't want to limit staff on creativity. If they come up with a, a idea or a solution, I want them to bring it forward. I don't want them to be close-minded.
Councilmember Long?
Yeah, I agree. I don't think that I was saying that that was off the table. I think for me, at least a couple of council members here had indicated, and I believe the city manager as well, that there's a desire to have some waterfront activation and, and some recreational opportunities for our residents. So if that looks like something that we could form through a, a public-private partnership of some degree or something like that, I don't think that that should be completely ruled out as we move forward. I don't think it's a desire to be fair here and say, well, let's allow each company to have two slips. That's not the way that business works typically. So if, if, if there was an opportunity for us to, to have a desire to allow this recreational activity, we would more or less bid that out, and if we were to dedicate or provide a certain amount of space for that waterfront activation to be hosted by an individual company, then we could work with the city to, to allow that opportunity. I don't think we should, we should hold ourselves back from, from allowing that to be a possibility. Thank you.
And I think this is a, a great opportunity to bring this discussion back to another Cal meeting, once you've developed that policy, so we can kind of vet it from there as well. Councilmember Cummings?
Yeah, I'm in agreement, letting them get creative, including the land lease. So we never know what, what, what they can come up with. That'd be awesome.
Okay.
We, we will start with setting up meetings with the stakeholders that are running these businesses. I mean, obviously, their ideas are, are a great point, point to start, so that's where we'll begin.
All right. Thank you. I think before we move on to the next topic, we'll take a break till 11:40.
............
Yeah?
Yeah. Well, first of your, um, we actually can do both of these. Um, if you're, then I'll just, uh, what's? You know, it was the good, with National Geographic, which is their most beautiful like in the world.
We wish part was that.
Higgins, um, so it was very big.
The light by driver's city, East to driver's.
East to driver's city, and it was the receipts like a hole, like, hopefully it was really the butt ash.
Okay.
Which is another story. I won't end it.
It's crazy.
Um, but, uh, yeah, it was skinny, because he threw it, um, Higgins, there was, um, um, yeah, sprinted a hundred and sixty foot to death. This whole movement is carrying.
Obviously. And only it didn't freeze, right?
Hmm?
Only it didn't freeze.
Yes. Yeah. It's one of the worst. Five. So, um, speaking of, uh, yeah.
Okay, I'd like to call the meeting back to order. Uh, next item on the agenda is item four B, number three, council meeting presentation and time limits for legislative matters, uh, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor. The city has a, uh, council rules, uh, of procedure for your agenda that you all publish and adopt. Um, within that document, there is a, a section, uh, on section T, which is on, starts on page nine of thirteen. Uh, as you kind of read through that, that section T governs public comment opportunities. Um, in subsection two, there, it lists out petitions to council, citizens' input time. Uh, if you move forward to number three, it talks about councils will have discretion in implementing certain procedures as follows. And it lays out, um, an opportunity for the council by motion of the mayor uh, to limit citizens' input or, and/or public comment at cows or regular meetings. Uh, lit, setting the limit of the length of the time individuals may speak. That is in there in a broad, um, broad category. Um, what I thought we could have a discussion about this morning is on, on the public hearing section, right now in the ci, let me back up, in the citizens' input, uh, time, uh, you deal with this every meeting, there is a three-minute individual maximum with a sixty-minute total uh, for citizens' input time, but under the public hearing, uh, section, there is no limit. So, I thought it would be appropriate to have a discussion with council today on whether or not you thought it would be appropriate to have a limit on, uh, the discussion time for, uh, public hearings that are not quasi-judicial and whether or not you would like to have that added to your, uh, rules of agenda. I could tell you on the administrative side, I've had a discussion with staff on, uh, seeking to limit, uh, presentations and input on ordinances and resolutions that are, are in a hearing to five minutes. Um, all the backup information is provided for those, uh, documents. We have, uh, opportunities for individual ad hoc discussions. Uh, we end up having individual one-on-ones. And so really for, for me on, on our side, you know, the presentation should be an executive summary of, of what is before you all for a vote or for, for consideration. If something is going to take twenty to thirty minutes, to me, that is an item that I think is appropriate for a cow, as we saw this morning, we wouldn't just bring you a boat ramp revision. You know, there's, obviously, it was an hour for that, special events, an hour. So rather than just bringing forward an item and expecting you to have that discussion in five min, you know, gather what you can and then vote on it, those type of items we'll pull out and, and we'll seek to have a cow, uh, presentation. Um, so my thought process on the discussion this morning is to see if you all would be interested in considering on the other side as well as, uh, city side, putting a limit to the, the public input, input time for individuals, uh, on, on hearings outside of, um, consent agenda. So there is no further backup, just discussion.
Okay. And my understanding, and I know, uh, Mr. City Manager, you, you asked to talk about this a little later in the agenda under, uh, roundtable discussion quasi-judicial hearings. And I just want to make sure, um, you know, especially for the newer, uh, council members, uh, if it's a quasi-judicial hearing, that's a whole different type of a hearing uh, where we cannot limit, uh, the citizens' input time. So what the city manager is talking about today is any other type of, um, hearing uh, that we are having that's not quasi-judicial, uh, like he had mentioned. Uh, so for me personally, uh, you know, I have, you know, we have a specified, uh, time period for, for the citizens', uh, input. Uh, as we all have seen and most of us, uh, even in our own discussions have noticed that probably with fi, within five minutes, we should be able to get our point across. Um, and also, just like, uh, I believe in our last meeting, uh, when we had the, uh, burying owls group, a lot of time what these particular individuals will do or organizations, you know, they'll have a thirty-minute presentation and what they'll do is they'll just utilize that time accordingly where one speaker, the next speaker, and the next speaker comes, so they can typically get their point across. Uh, the one thing that I, uh, think if we're going to go down this path is not only do you limit, uh, the amount of time for the speaker, do we want to limit very similar to what we do in the initial citizens' input? Do we want to cap it at sixty minutes or do you just want to do, if we are going to set a, uh, you know, some type of a parameter on the time, you know, is it just going to be per speaker? You know, if we have a hundred speakers, I will tell you that in the past on, uh, topics that are in great interest to the community, uh, I've seen, and we may have one of them tonight. Um, you know, you could see a hundred people fill up in this room. And, uh, you know, if everyone has a unlimited amount of time to speak, uh, we could be here for quite some time. I personally believe, uh, very similar to the staff's approach, uh, five minutes, you should be able to get your point across. Uh, if that's the case, uh, do we just stick with a specified time for each speaker? Do we want to say, okay, sixty minutes, um, uh, you know, for each item? You know, there's some of the things that's on the table, so. With that, you know, I'll open up the discussion, Councilmember Hayden?
Yeah, I think, um, in the history of this council, whenever there was a controversial topic like UEP in the past, and you may have had a hundred speakers, that that sixty-minute time limit was always waived. Um, I will never be in favor of not allowing a person to at least have the ability to speak during their three-minute allotment. So I, and I don't think you'll find too many judicial bodies that will get to an hour and say, okay, that's it. Sorry for you forty people that are still standing back there, um, you're not allowed to speak, you're, you're not allowed to have your voice heard. Um, I don't, I don't think that's the intent of that. Very few times do we have, uh, um, a topic that's generating enough, uh, controversy or enough concern that it extends over an hour. Yes, you're right, tonight might be one of those when you're talking about UEP because it's happened in the past. They've been in the past, they've been lined up outside, we've had seating outside, uh, downstairs for, for these, um, particular issues, but, uh, I think the three-minute, um, I am in favor however of during the public hearing stages of, um, having that at three minutes as well, except for the quasi-judicial because we're bound by certain regulations on that. But, uh, yes, three minutes is plenty of time to, uh, get your point across. I've had way too much experience to see that pretty much after that three-minute mark or even before, the person's starting to get redundant and saying the same thing, um, over and over again. So, um, I like the idea of staff also, um, uh, keeping their presentations to a certain time limit because it's incumbent upon us to do the research, to do our homework, um, to understand the background, to understand all the complexities that might be part of an ordinance and that, uh, five-minute presentation should just be on, um, the particular facts of that. In fact, personally, I'd rather see it reversed. I'd rather see city staff, uh, say, if it's a zoning or land use, um, we're for this ordinance and here's why, rather than waiting until the end for their recommendation. I'd rather see it in reverse order and then present the facts to support it. Um, so, um, but, but that's just a personal choice, uh, on that. But, um, definitely for the three minutes for the public hearings, definitely for not limiting it to an hour should we have more speakers, um, involved.
Councilmember Shepard?
Yeah, I, I agree with, uh, when staff does a presentation like one zoning and that in the beginning they should say if they're for or against, because I believe that, that'll speed up the process. If they're for, they can say less, and then if there's questions, there will be questions. Um, but a lot of times, we all were set up here, and there are some situations where we pretty much know the outcome and we're just all sitting here having to hear all this information when we already researched it and done our information. So I agree.
Councilmember Steinkie?
Thank you, I, I agree as well, and, uh, we, we meet, uh, ahead of time, uh, and, and any of the questions that we typically have, we'd have in our one-on-one meetings, uh, prior to getting there. So hearing a for and against and, uh, and an executive summary. With the detail available, if we need to get into it based on a question, I think is, is a way to go. Um, I think that, uh, as it relates to, um, citizens' input, uh, I believe during a non- quasi-judicial hea, hearing that we should have a limit uh, both on, um, each individual and on, uh, overall time. Uh, certainly during initial citizens' input, there can be a wide array of topics that could be brought up. So I'd agree with Councilmember Hayden that, you know, the hope is that it would be done in sixty minutes, but if there are other issues that we need to know about to not allow them, after they've taken time out of their schedule to be here to let us know about it, I think we accommodate that. Uh, but as it relates to the non- quasi-judicial hearings, um, you're typically, it's going to be a for or against. Uh, and so, um, instead of hearing the same reason why someone is for or against something a hundred times, it's like, okay, the point is made. Um, so I would, I would agree with limiting the time both, uh, per, uh, individual as well as total amount of time for that particular, uh, issue.
Councilmember Cummings?
Yeah, I'm in agreement as well, and I do believe there should be a time limit because it can go on all night. So, eh, I feel that, you know, there are ways that they can send us information throughout the week that we can also look at instead of sitting here four, five, six hours. Um, so I am in favor of a time limit as well. Thanks.
Yeah, for me, I'm, I'm okay with the three minutes, uh, and also for the sixty minutes. I said, I think that's a standard. As we all know, we have the power to change that standard at any meeting. So when we have those hot topics where we may have a hundred people in the room, then it would basically be on us if we want to extend that sixty-minute period. We've done it many times in the past, um, you know, not too oft, I shouldn't say many times. Uh, there's been a few instances the last five years that I've been here, uh, where, you know, we've, we had a hundred people here. Uh, that's, that doesn't happen, uh, too often. Uh, my guess, ninety-five percent of the time, the three minutes per individual, sixty minutes total, ninety-five percent of the time, we're going to fall within that category. The other five percent, if this council or any future council, uh, has a desire, uh, you know, if we, we find ourselves with a packed room, we want to extend that sixty minutes, we, we have that opportunity and that choice as a council to extend that time. Uh, but just, uh, uh, for a standard, I think the three minutes, sixty minutes total is fine. Any other discussions on that? Uh, Mr. City Manager, I guess, uh, the next step, since this is a council, uh, rules of procedure, um, if, if this council has that desire, uh, I will work with, uh, the city manager, I'm sorry, the city attorney, uh, to make those changes and I will bring that back, uh, to council, uh, with those changes, uh, for a vote and because it will be a change in our procedures. So if that's a desire of this council, I will work on that and, uh, should be able to bring that back to you here in the next two weeks, I think, uh, because it's a pretty, pretty minor change.
Mayor, I think it's, um, taking, uh, like I said, um, citizens' input time, uh, subsection number two, which has that three-minute individual with a sixty-minute maximum and the sliding that over from subsection C two and making it a, a D two. Uh, I would ask, um, one minor adjustment in the three minutes is that the city staff presentation as well as the applicant have at least five minutes to, to present.
Okay.
And not just be a party to provide additional input.
Okay. So we'll make that change as well as, uh, the city and the applicant, uh, gets five minutes in their presentation? Uh, with any input from our, our community as far as citizen input will be, uh, three minutes for a total of sixty. And I think it's also worth men, mentioning the two five-minute segments, uh, for staff and the applicant shouldn't be a part of the sixty minutes. And I believe the sixty minutes should solely be for citizens' input. So if that's the direction council wants to move forward, I'll, I'll work on that and bring that back. All right? Anything else on that topic, Mr. City Manager?
No, thank you.
Okay. All right, next, uh, and, uh, item on the agenda, uh, item for addendum, review the ordinance twenty-five dash twenty-three on the procurement process. Uh, I had asked, uh, to add that item to the agenda. Uh, staff was, uh, has a introduction tonight. I had several questions, uh, and I think other council members did as well. I know we had had a previous discussion, uh, on this, uh, and staff had, uh, provided a draft of this, uh, particular ordinance to move forward. Uh, I thought it was, uh, good for us to have another discussion. And, and really I believe, whether it's this topic or any other topic, unless it's a minor change, uh, and I wouldn't consider this a minor change, um, if it's a minor change, I don't have a problem with us giving staff a direction, they make the minor change and bring it back as an introduction. I think if it's something that's a little more detailed of a change, uh, moving forward, I think, me personally, uh, it would probably be in the best interest of all of us, uh, to make those changes, uh, in the ordinance, uh, bring that back at a, at a count, a count meeting and say, hey, as a result of our discussion, we made these changes. What do you think? Thumbs up, thumb down? It could be a simple five-minute conversation, but that, that may alleviate some of the problems that we find ourselves here today. So, uh, just wanted to point that out, uh, moving forward, that may, may be a good, uh, good, good policy. That may actually speed the process up, not slow it down. With that being said, I see Mr. Mason at the podium, and, uh, I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Mason.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers Mark Mason, Financial Services Director. Uh, normally, our procurement manager would be up here speaking on this one, uh, but she's kind of lost her voice a little bit. Uh, so I'm here. I do know what this is, so I, I can talk about it. Just not going to be reading from the slides. Uh, so as, uh, as discussed, this is the presentation we would have made in a couple of weeks and probably will still make again in a couple of weeks, but this kind of brings everything up to where we talked about. We originally, uh, I have no idea why that's not moving forward. We originally, uh, brought forth a, uh, as you recall, uh, we presented, uh, recommended changes to the council regarding the procurement ordinance in October of, uh, twenty-twenty-two. And, and for this was for most of you, some of you that are new, you didn't see this particular presentation. Uh, so we recognize that doing this now is, uh, you know, it's probably very apropos. In addition, uh, we've also provide you a document that gives you a side-by-side comparison of what the, what the code looked like and then what our proposed changes are. And the underline, the red, the red items that are in the document show you that what we're adding or what we're clarifying or what, uh, what we're changing, uh, with regard to the ordinance itself. So one of the reasons why we do this periodically, we'll be looking at our ordinance sometimes, uh, you know, the, the, how the, the state changes their laws, we want to make sure that our ordinance, uh, aligns itself with the state statutes. At the same time, we, uh, we definitely want to make our procurement processes more efficient, uh, as often as possible. So one of the reasons why we do this is to add, you know, sometimes to add language or to change things, to streamline them, make them more efficient. Uh, and of course, uh, there are periodically, uh, you know, we'll look at the, we'll look at the code and we'll be reading a sentence and we're going, okay. Not sure exactly what that meant, so why don't we need to, why don't we clarify exactly what that meant? And that's some of the things that are also included in this ordinance. Uh, I'll try to stay within the five minutes, I hopefully I will today. Um, the, again, we brought many of these things to you in, uh, in October of twenty-twenty-two, but some of the things that we're looking at in the exclusions, we're looking to add language uh, and actually to clarify information that's in the artistic services section. Uh, part of the, uh, we've added a, we've added language in here that says that there are certain things that if the artist is doing this, that it also is excluded from, uh, the, uh, the procurement ordinance rules associated with acquisition. So that also happens to do with, uh, entertainment and entertainment-related services for city-sponsored events. Again, uh, we're adding and clarifying language included in there that says, look, if we're doing this and we need to go rent something, we don't need to get the, you know, the three quotes in order to go do the rent. Uh, it's all inclusive as far as the exclusion is concerned. This will create efficiencies in what we're doing, uh, as far as procurement is concerned. In the same time, uh, we have added some language in here about the waiver of procurement process. Currently, the city council wages the current, the, uh, procurement process. At the same time, the city manager has the authority to, uh, approve purchases up to a hundred thousand dollars. So as we were looking at this, we said, you know, it, it's kind of would make sense that if the city manager is already approved, uh, allowed to approve for the, uh, the, uh, purchase of items that are a hundred thousand dollars or less, that he would also have the authority to approve the waiver of the procurement ordinance at the same time. And, and of course, within the circumstances, the limited certain circumstances that are included in the ordinance. And so we've added that and clarified that as an option that's available. Again, to, you know, to, uh, create some efficiencies in the procurement process. At the same time, responsibilities and authority, we've added some language with, regarding the, um, annual purchase authority for goods and services. And so when we enter into multi-year contracts, periodically, the multi-year contract may be a hundred and eighty thousand dollars over a three-year period, but it's sixty thousand dollars a year. In the past, we've brought that, that item to the city council for approval because the overall, the overall contract exceeded the cost of a hundred thousand dollars, which required the city council to then approve that. But at the same time, we're looking at this and clarifying and, and, and requesting that you add this language in there that will give the city manager the authority to actually approve the three-year contract because on an annual basis, it's less than a hundred thousand dollars. And that's what this, this, this language, uh, primarily means. We're also looking to increase the small, uh, the small purchase, uh, item threshold from currently it's four thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars to nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars. The reason why that's nine, we're in the nine hundreds, it's ten thousand dollars is the small purchase or anything. Under a ten thousand dollars is the reason why it's nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars. And so in this case, prior to this change, the quote limit is at, at four thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars or less, you don't only, you only need to get one quote and you move on. Uh, cost of doing business has gone up significantly over the last five to seven years and it, right now, we find ourselves, uh, doing quotes, uh, and, and we find ourselves that very rarely do we have one quote that's less than five thousand. So we're looking at changing that to ten thousand, uh, and allowing for the one-quote approach at less than ten thousand dollars. At the same time, we've added a section, uh, into pro, uh, purchases of goods and services performed by private providers. All right, so, actually, I asked for this one. So what this usually allows for is, uh, we contract with, with, uh, a financial service advisor who provides us services to go out and get quotes for, uh, debt issues or manages the process for the issuance of debt. And if I'm going out and doing a bank deal, uh, previous to putting this particular item into the, into the equation, we would perform everything under procurement and we would get everything in-house and then we would turn around and send that information off to the financial advisor. The financial advisor would then review the information and then send us back a recommendation while at the same time, I would have reviewed the same information, et cetera. However, we hire these folks to actually process this stuff for us. And so what this allows us to do, as well as others for that matter, but in this case, the financial advisor example, is that the financial advisor would actually manage the entire process of the acquisition for the, for a bank loan. And this will actually free up a lot of time and speed up the process. Normally, this is what they do for every other community in the state of Florida. Our rules provided for something a little bit different. So we're adding this language into the, into the ordinance that will allow us to utilize the financial advisor for the purpose to which we actually contracted their services for. Let's see. So under the CCCNA, uh, um, and the SAC engineering process, uh, the competitive, consultant competitive negotiation act, which is, uh, Florida statute requires certain things to occur, uh, within the, when you're selecting a, a, uh, profession that falls up underneath the CCNA process. In this case, this would be any of your professional engineers, landscape architects, architects, surveyors... architects, surveyors, and I think we also have construction contracts that are particular value. And so, we, the city has an SAC committee and has had an SAC committee probably the last 40, 50 years. The, and I think we're like several other communities that have the same thing. But with this process, what we have is the composition of the SAC committee. We're looking to remove the procurement manager as, from an active role to more of a management role where they will service the chairman but not have a vote. Okay? This, and this then allows the procurement manager to actually have conversations with others that are on the SAC committee when an item comes before the SAC, and then work through whatever the issues might be, that might, questions that might come up, et cetera, with regard to the SAC. We believe that this will help streamline, you know, the operations of the SACs where the chairman then, you know, without a vote, you know, can actually just simply chair the committee, the committee in a meeting in a much more proficient and efficient manner. We've also put in language that actually codifies something that we've been doing for years in having a technical evaluation committee, and we're actually looking at the composition of it, and we're codifying what we've been doing and putting it into the code. At the same time, we're also clarifying some language throughout the section with regard to the, to the CCCNA to help create, and to clarify how the CCCNA and how the SAC works. In addition, under professional services continuing contracts, we've had this in place for years. The state of Florida just recently changed their dollar threshold again. And for us, we've had a system whereby at less than $100,000, the city, the city manager would authorize the contract for professional services under the continuing contracts that we have in place. At $200,000 or above $100,000, everything would go to the city council for approval. And prior to the change in the law to $500,000, we had $200,000 was the threshold in the state statute, so the $100,000 to $200,000 didn't really make a lot of, a lot of sense. In this case, what the state has done is that it has creased the allowance for utilization of continuing contracts up to $500,000, and we're recommending that we also allow the city manager to authorize these continuing contracts or the use of the continuing contracts up to $500,000. Anything over $500,000 would come back to the city council. At the same time, this $500,000 threshold, you know, and the requirements associated with getting bids or not getting bids also has a construction value threshold as well. So, if the construction value is more than $4 million, then we would have to utilize, we would not be able to utilize the continuing contracts. We would have to go out for bid anyways. And so, this simply just allows for, again, what we would believe to be some efficiencies gained because we utilize these continuing contracts regularly. As a matter of fact, we're in the process of going out for, doing it again and getting another stable continuing contracts in place that we would use for, I think, probably up to three to five years. Under public-private partnership, we've added a complete new section under, called public-private partnership. We've also identified fees associated with, for qualified unsolicited proposals, as well as the council's ability to either waive or reduce the fees if they so choose. In this section, the last time we talked about this, in October, when we, when we provided this update to the procurement ordinance, there was some discussion regarding the contracting of goods and services through the request for proposal process and for the council if they elected to serve under a direct procurement authority. And there was a discussion regarding, you know, some, that we would be looking for, I think, some better direction about how this process would work. So, what was originally written, we've, we're looking at to strike through all of that language and simply put some very simple, straightforward times when the city council may elect to serve as the SAC committee. And in these, in the circumstances that we've identified here, that the city council may serve as the selection advisory committee, when the outsourcing of city services will, which will result in the reduction of a labor, of the labor workforce. And so, the city council would certainly, you know, could choose to do that at the time if that's, if we're outsourcing some portion of the city, and it would reduce our overall labor workforce because of that outsource. At the same time, and I realize this language may be a little clunky, but the more I read it, the more it kind of makes sense to me, that the city council would vote at a regular scheduled meeting to, on a two-thirds majority, to actually take the city out of the process and choose to be the SAC for the ranking of proposals. That's essentially what that B means. So, when you all would, you know, at a regular scheduled meeting decide that, you know, we read about a solicitation that we have and that, you know, I, one of the council members says, I think we should sit as the SAC in this one as opposed to city staff, then you would make a motion, and then you would vote, and you would either, you know, and choose to do so or not choose to do so, to sit as the SAC for that particular solicitation. Now, I think the question then becomes, well, how would we know? How would we know that the solicitation is even out there? Or which ones that we want to do and which ones we don't want to do? So, I'm glad you asked, and if you didn't, I'll ask for you. So, the, on the Elmo, we, we publish something, this item, this document weekly on Thursday of every single week. We send it out to a select group of people that have asked to be included in the, in this. And so, for us, this would be a very simple, simple thing to add the city council, the city council staff to the, to the distribution list, and on Thursday, we would send out the information. And this basically talks about, these are the solicitations that are outstanding, and in, this is the due dates, the times, and if there was an election to be the SAC, if you haven't already made the election in advance, then you would bring something like this forward to the city council, and then you would, you know, make that vote at that time. So, for us, this is a simple thing to just simply add the city council staff to the distribution list, and, and we would send this out on a weekly basis. Okay, I think we're back up on the number C. And so, the last one would be, the city manager will advise qualifying projects, and that's basically the advise of the qualifying projects. This is basically when, you know, if you have any choice to do this, or I would say that, you know, there's times when we'll be bringing things before the city council during an SAC, and they're, you know, saying, well, that's going to require a solicitation, then maybe, you know, you'd make the choice then, and then bring it back for a vote at a, at a future council meeting. All right, a couple of other revisions included in the, in the document. We've changed the word in, under construction contract in supporting documents. I think there's always been some questioning here about what's a contingency, what, how do we use contingencies, things like that. We went through a audit with the city auditor here a couple of years ago, and one of the recommendations, and one of our recommendations is actually to change the wording that's in our ordinance from contract amendment to contingency because that's basically what it's talking about. That entire section talks about a contingency, and a contract amendment utilizing contingency that's already been established by the city council would qualify under this particular section. So, we're changing it, we're recommending changing the wording to contingency. And last but not least, we've added a section in here, which is subsection K, under standards of conduct for city officials and employees called a cone of silence. This basically codifies exactly what the code of silence is and identifies to anybody reading our ordinances regarding procurement that we have a cone of silence in place, and when we refer to it in our procurement documents or solicitations for either a bid or an RNP, et cetera, that, you know, the, we would refer them back to the ordinance with regard to the cone of silence and what it means. And of course, this is, we've added in here just simply a summary of all of the revisions, the things that we've changed or were recommending to be changed, et cetera, throughout the entire procurement ordinance. And of course, I also, as I told you earlier, we've provided you a side-by-side comparison of each section that we've changed with regard to the ordinance and with regard to clarifications or additions or any deletions associated with the ordinance. And that's it. I think there's one more page to that, and that's it. We're here for any questions. If I, hopefully, I answered all the questions, but if I didn't, we're here to answer them.
Thank you for the presentation. You know, I just had a few comments when I reviewed this particular ordinance 25-23 in relation to the ordinance that we passed last year, 24-22, when it had to do with the procurement process for council to be, by majority vote, be the selection advisory committee. If you, if you look back to the ordinance 24-22, it was a pretty broad ordinance when council could be the selection advisory committee. And when I read ordinance 25-23, it kind of, if you read it, there's only certain items that we are allowed to even have the opportunity to be on the selection advisory board. I personally do not agree with that. I think very similar to the ordinance that we passed back on in 2024, ordinance 24-22, that we should have the opportunity as a council anytime that we want to participate in that selection advisory board. Now, I can, I can honestly say, in the five years that I've been here, I can honestly only remember maybe one or two instances that I would think that that would even rise to that threshold. 99.9% of the time, I think staff will be the selection advisory. But I think that on certain key topics, and those topics could be even outside of the realm, which is identified in this particular ordinance, that we may choose to be the selection advisory committee. Now, if you look at the ordinance back on 24-22, I think it's pretty wordy in section two, if you look when we would have that opportunity. When you look at the new ordinance presented here today, 25-23, and you go to that section, right now, it reads the city council may serve as a selection advisory committee for procurement of goods and services. Where does it go on the next page?
I'd put it back up on the screen if you want to flip it over to the screen.
I'm sorry.
It's back up on the screen if you want to flip it over to the screen.
So, I think, for me personally, you know, I think that sentence should read something similar to this. The city council may serve as the advisory committee for the procurement of any, and I think that's the key word, any goods and services by majority vote of city council. And it's pretty much as simple as that. In any instance, if we choose as a collective body to serve as a selection advisory committee, I think we should have that opportunity. And it's not necessarily whether I agree or one particular council member. I think it should be collective, a majority vote, just like all of our votes are. I don't think that it should only be for specific items that is outlined in this new ordinance. I think the sentence is as simple as that. We should be able to serve on any goods and services that we choose to be on the selection advisory committee by majority vote of city council. I don't want to tie our hands, I don't want to tie the hands of any future council, and it should be as simple as that. And that's, you know, and I think it's a great idea what staff provided, that we'll be on that list where we'll get that information. If any of us feel, hey, that may be something that we want to participate in the selection advisory committee, then we should have that opportunity to do so by majority vote. The way it's written now, I think it's pretty, it's restrictive. The other, the other couple items that I had had questions on, staff had clarified that for me, so I don't have a problem with those particular items. The only last item that I wanted to mention was the $100,000 threshold that we have given the city manager. And for our new council members, we changed this a couple of years ago. Before, it used to only be 50, and a couple of years ago, we had changed that threshold and had rose that threshold to $100,000. So, I guess the question is, you know, do, for certain circumstances, under the professional services, do we want to rise that to a threshold of $500,000? You know, and that's a discussion that we will have as a, as a council and make that determination. You know, for me, it's pretty simple. If that needs to come before council for approval, we have two meetings a month, we should be able to approve that pretty simply. To me, keeping that threshold consistent throughout the city manager's purview of $100,000, to me, is easier to have that consistency throughout whatever the, whatever it is. And for me, I would recommend keeping that threshold consistently throughout all aspects of the city manager's purview to be $100,000. He has the opportunity, or she would have that opportunity, to come back to council and say, hey, for this particular instance, you know, I think that we should move forward this way, and it's going to be a value of $300,000. To me, that's a simple vote and a simple discussion. So, for me personally, I think we would just leave it consistently across the board where the purview of the city manager is $100,000. And again, like I had mentioned earlier, a very broad sentence, whether the city council wants to be the selection advisory. I think that, you know, we have that, that choice as a council. I do like the other items they added in there for clarity because, you know, I know a few, several months ago, we were going back and forth with the city attorney whether we could at least attend the selection advisory committees and listen, not participate. It's crystal clear here, I kind of like that approach. We all have that opportunity because we are basically an extension of the city, is what the city attorney advises several months ago, therefore allowing us the opportunity. But if we do that, I do feel that we fall within the cone of silence as soon as we engage. You know, we don't want to have outside vendors communicating with us if we're going to the meetings and listen. I think we have to be very aware of that and kind of distance ourselves in that process until that, until that decision or recommendation's been made and we vote on it as a council. So, I agree with that. So, with that being said, I'll open it up. Councilmember Stanky, you're next.
Thank you. Just a couple of comments and a question. One, I'm not sure that we wouldn't be kind of opening up Pandora's box for any procurement because with the verbiage being shall, or may, sorry, may, not shall, they may, then I would think then that financial services would have to make us aware of every procurement decision that's being made for us then to choose whether we wanted to or not wanted to.
And I think that's what they said.
So, this section applies to procurements of goods and services when the selection advisory committee is used? And we have a list that goes out now that has a distribution list on it that puts forth, here's the four or five items, an example that was put on the board. So, we could add your staff to that distribution list so that you have an opportunity to know what is going out that you could supplant the selection advisory committee. So, that's just a matter of folding you into a routine administrative practice today.
And so, what type of volume are we looking at? How, you know, how many, how many of these happen a month, a year? Is there some, you know, ballpark figure?
We typically have We typically have an SAC once a month, right?
Yeah, we, we have an SAC meeting once a month, but then, and right now, we have scheduled at least one SAC, something for an SAC meeting, if not two, twice on the same meeting. But right now, I think we have about 10, 10, 12 active solicitations out on the street right now.
Okay.
And so, you know, we, we solicit a lot of stuff. You know, RFPs, you know, bids, we're always doing that, so it's...
I, I guess that's, so the reason my question was is like, would, you know, are we going into this with wide eyes, knowing that if, if, if we want the "may" to be applicable to any procurement that we're, you know, under the process of now or will be in the future, do we want to have to make a decision on that on what could be relatively smaller things, rather than...
Right, but we don't, I mean, we don't use the selection advisory committee for the acquisition of, of things that are under 50,000 or something like that in some cases. It's not, you know, when we have to go out there and buy asphalt, you know, we're not necessarily using a, a selection advisory committee for that. You know, the, we, I mean, there might be somebody in Public Works or a couple of groups that are, a couple of folks in Public Works that are reviewing the bids, but it's, it doesn't come before the selection advisory committee.
Okay, thank you.
But this would imply that if we're doing a bid for asphalt, that if you wanted to sit as the advisory committee for that, then you would do that.
Okay, well, I would suggest that we don't go too far with that as far as something that we'd have to say yes or no to. The others, the SAC composition, it, it talks about, about in, in the section where SAC composition, committee composition, it's on your page four. Does that SAC committee change at all based on the topic or the procurement?
Now, we, we have a standing SAC committee that includes the Public Works Director, the Utilities Director, the Finance Director, and the Assistant, the what? CIP Director and the, and the Assistant City Manager. That's a standing committee, and it's those folks or their designees. And so, you know, periodically, matter of fact, I think most of us in, in one form or another, depending on the subject matter that's coming up, will assign different folks in our staff that will actually sit on that committee, depending on the, you know, the, whatever that is. But that's a standing SAC committee that meets, whether it's the, all of them that are, are in that committee or their designees that will meet for the CCNA purpose, for the purpose of selecting something under the CCNA.
Okay, thank you. And, and lastly, I would, I would tend to support the mayor's comments about leaving the, the threshold at $100,000, the number of times that it, it comes above that. It would tend to be a simple yes or no. And, you know, being stewards of our taxpayers' dollars, I, I think that is incumbent upon us. I would, I would be supportive of leaving it 100. Thank you.
Okay, before I open it up to the next speaker, I just wanted to read the paragraph that's in 25, I'm sorry, 24-22 that we put in there last year as far as the selection advisory process. "As a alternate to the SAC procedures described in section H4 above, the city council may elect to waive some or all of the provisions of this code and serve as the direct procurement authority for the procurement of goods and services, period. In the role of the direct procurement authority, the city council performs the role that would otherwise be performed by the selection advisory committee." So when I read that paragraph, it's pretty, pretty much broad and open, where it's not in the new ordinance that they're, that they're presenting. So that's what I was just trying to, to clarify. Councilmember Cummings.
Thank you. So go back to the purview of $100,000. My question, Mike, is we have a lot of these projects that we've been working with here within the city, and a lot of these projects takes a very, very, very long time. And I believe the reason why you're asking for the larger amount of sum is because this will speed the projects up like eight months, correct? And, and if this is correct, could we do it off of $300,000? Does it have to be $500,000? So if you wouldn't mind clarifying a little bit more of why we're at, why you're asking for more monies and not coming back to council to vote on?
Yeah, I'm gonna have to figure out a way with staff how to further elaborate on some of the things as we go through the cows. This way, I'm not trying to interfere in the discussion of council. It's a, it's an important question, and I'm thankful you asked, because I was gonna try and explain this. So right now, when we, right now, when we put out a professional service contract for either an engineer, an attorney, or an architect, there's a pretty substantial and elaborate process that is involved with that. And let me just briefly run you through it. The staff has to fill out a procurement request for work, identify funding is available for that task. An RFP is drafted, that RFP is put into a document by procurement, and then advertised out on the street. That takes typically a month for all that to happen. It's advertised no less than typically a month, so that's two months. When it comes in, all of those packets for people that want to have, perform this work are reviewed for sufficiency and competency, and then eventually sent to a technical evaluation committee, and then that is shortlisted to a group of three firms that are the highest ranking. That takes basically another month. Then they're scheduled on an SAC for a presentation. That presentation occurs, the vendors come in. That meeting could be three weeks away, it could be one week away. You add another month for that. Eventually, we get to the point where we can start negotiating with the number-one-ranked firm, and that negotiation could take two to three months. So in situations where we're performing projects that need professional services, the $100,000 limit is forcing us to go outside, and that process, right then and there, adds six to nine months to the delivery, the end use of that project. What we're trying to do here is utilize what we call continuing contracts. So we have an engineering library, we have a library of architects, surveying firms, that we already have brought to council that have met qualifications for specific disciplines. So we already have a list and contracts in place for multiple years, three years, four years, five years, depending on the length of that continuing contract. And the idea here is, with that continuing contract being capped at $100,000, it's forcing all of the projects that would require professional services between one and the statutory limit of 500 to have an additional six to nine months. So the idea is, let's utilize the contracts we have today already in place with billing rates, with a process that we've already reviewed, the competency of the firms, the insurance of the firms, the licenser of the firms, the ability to perform the work of the firms, and have a contract in place to, instead of forcing us out on the RFP side and out for the solicitation, utilize contracts we have, and thereby eliminating six to nine months of front-end procurement work, therefore delivering the project within a, with a contract, with billing rates already established and firms we already have pre-qualified. The whole point of the CCNA project is to require municipalities and governmental entities to have a competency-based solicitation, right? So the government wants to make sure that the most qualified, most competent firm is the one designing a specific, right? You don't want a railway expert or an engineer designing a, a bridge or an airplane, you know, a marine expert designing an airplane. So the whole point of that process is to go through that competency-based review, but that process just takes so long. We, we, in a continuing contract, we do all that upfront, we get contracts in place with all of them, and we bring that list to council and get, that contract is already approved. So all we're asking here is to raise the limit of when we can use that to allow us to be more expeditious in delivering projects. So I, I understand the mayor's comments. I wanted to add that because I don't know if, what, keeping that the same, there are ramifications for our ability to live, to deliver projects. Thank you.
Thank you.
If you have no other questions before I go to the next person, just a comment on your, on, on your explanation there. What you were identifying is a RFP process, basically, for those, for those types of services. Now, I don't think that, you know, I, I personally agree, if we can streamline that process, that's great. I think that we could waive, or you could elect to waive that process and still keep that $100,000 threshold, where you would still have to come back to council. So I think you could waive that process and say, okay, for those types of services up to $500,000, we can waive the procurement process, but can we still need for you to come back to approve anything over that $100,000?
That's an interesting question you asked, because I had gotten up and said, is there a way for us to expand the language of the continuing contract to allow those contracts to be utilized up to 500? Just between 100 and 500, maybe we bring that forward as a consent item? So I, I'm trying to find a way that we can still speed up the, the contracts, but I'll let...
Mr. Mason's got his hand back there, and he's, he's got an eager answer for us.
Well, well, the, you know, the hard part is, is that his back's to me, and it's like, you know, we can't actually have a conversation, or he can't see me standing up here. But, okay, so I think, first and foremost, I don't, the CCNA is a statutory requirement about how we procure professional services and the professional services that I identified. We can't waive that process. That's first and foremost. Number two, the $500,000 limit that we're talking about, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong page again. The $500,000 limit was just recently changed by, by statute. It used to be $200,000. And so I think the state has recognized somewhere along the way that continuing contracts, the cost of doing business and the cost of projects has gone up materially across the board. So this $500,000 that's in here is a $500,000 to do a study or to do work for a project that's 400 million, for, that's $4 million or less. And so we currently do use our continuing contracts for projects up to 2 million or less for contracts. And if the cost of the project exceeds 2 million, we, we have to go through the RFP process regardless. Now it's changed to 4 million, and so the 4 million will allow, will require us after, if it's above 4 million, will require us, us to go through the RFP process regardless. So with that said, the $500,000 of the less than $4 million contract, what we're recommending is that we utilize the statutory allowance for the $500,000 for the city manager's authority. This saves not months here, this actually just doesn't come back to the city council. We already have the project that's out there, we already knew we were going to do something. We realized that potentially the cost of the SEP might be $250,000 as opposed to $100,000. So then we would, or the, the study would be this dollar value. If, you know, if we don't change this to 500,000, to $500,000, it's not gonna, it's not gonna cause any change. We'll still bring back the items to you, as we currently do, over $100,000. And, and so, right now, the city manager signs off on SCPs with professional services less than $100,000 today. We were just recommending that it just be moved to the statutory allowance of $500,000 as opposed to the $100,000, and allow the city manager to do those types of work for those types of projects that are either $4 million or less, and allow the SCPs to be issued $500,000 or less without coming back to the city council for authority, because these are projects and these are continuing contracts that you've already approved. If the state hadn't changed this, it would have stayed at $200,000 and $2 million, and I think we would have come back and recommended $200,000 if the, if the, if it hadn't changed. We're just taking advantage of, of clarifying this particular section and utilizing statutory authority as opposed to something else. That's, that, that is all this is about.
And with that being said, could, could there be an opportunity where, Mr. City Manager, you come to us, and I don't know how many instances throughout the years this would actually entail, but could you come to us and say, hey, look, you know, city council, we have item X, that it falls within the services, and it's above the $100,000? Can we utilize the, the statute up to the $500,000? Is that a possibility?
Certainly, there is.
And then, we don't have that nine months of delay. I don't want to cause a delay, but I'm trying to find a compromise where, if it's over $100,000, you still have to come back to city council to get the authority to move forward in that fashion.
I think that would require change in our continuing contract language. That would say we could go up to that, but it still requires council approval.
Yeah, in this particular case, I don't know that anything would really change. We'd still be coming back to the city council for your approval on an item that would be on the consent agenda.
Yeah, but we don't have that nine months of process.
There wouldn't be a nine months of process here. The, the difference being is that this is for continuing contracts that are only up to four, and proj, and projects up to $4 million. That's all this is. And so if we have a, a $5 million project and the SEP, and, and we would still have to go out for the bid.
Okay. Councilmember Ayton?
Yeah, so it's kind of a two-parter, really. It's $500,000 and $4 million.
Correct.
So it's, it's a little bit different. I don't, I don't know that I have it, and I needed you to clarify, because it sounded like you started out with, you wanted to move it to $500,000, then when you ended, your first conversation, you were okay with $100,000. So are you good with 100 or 500,000?
Well, I think that, for me personally, the city manager's threshold on all, all other areas is $100,000. Just for consistency, I would keep it at that. I don't want to draw out the nine months. I think that if it appears that we could move forward and it's going to be a $400,000 contract, city manager could come back to city council and say, hey, I want to, I want to move forward with this because of this, and it's going to take us over to $100,000 threshold, and we can bless him with doing that.
All right, just wanted that cliff going, and I, and I'm good with it, with $100,000. Some questions on the $4 million, okay? Just a hypothetical. Let's say we figured out a way to build a fire station for under $4 million, which I know we haven't been able to do that yet. Or let's say we're gonna do four miles of sidewalks, and we figure out a way to do it under $4 million, and we want to contract that out. So in other words, a construction company could be put on a continuing contract to do sidewalks for the next three years and, and stop any other construction company from possibly bidding on that project if we're doing a continuing contract.
This is for professional services only.
Yeah.
Okay.
This is only for engineers, architects, and surveyors. So this, this discretion that we're asking for is very limited.
You could hire a design company where bids have been out in the past under procurement for a design company to be on a continuing contract, or an engineering company, which most builders, you know, most engineering companies can also be builders. So a continuing contract would, would, could be using the same design company or the same engineering firm over those three years.
So within that continuing contract, there are disciplines, because remember, we want to make sure we have the most competent and qualified firm performing the design work or the survey work needed, right? You don't want to hire a land surveyor to do bathymetric. So there's categories, and within those categories, finance and procurement requires a rotation. You, you cannot just go to the same one and box out...
Okay, I was just making sure, because it kind of reads that we could continue to go back to the same companies year after year and award them the contract where there may be another company, another local company that might have a lower bid that could be able to do the work. And I'm just making sure, because it's, the language is kind of, kind of confusing there on the extension of these contracts.
Yeah, it's ve, very specific to professional services under a certain threshold, and then within that, we have administrative procedures for rotation.
I'm, I'm not going to overreact to the word "any." One could make the argument that, that opens the door for city council to start managing processes within city... that opens the door for city council to start managing processes within city government that they may not be involved with. We don't know what the mindset's going to be of future council members. They want to take over more than I think they should be entitled to do, but I'm not going to overreact to that. I think the mayor's right. I don't think we're going to have that many cases that come before us, that we're going to want to act as the SAC by a majority of the vote. One question I may ask for the city attorney, as the last surviving member of council on the SAC, there was an evaluation committee that I think I read, might, is that going to be eliminated? Did I read that in the, in the wording? Because what would happen was, when the proposals would come in to the SAC, they were probably evaluated first by the evaluation committee. The top three were picked, they were brought in, gave a presentation, and then the SAC would vote on those. Did I read language in there, where we're...
We're just codifying that, so that the vendors understand the process. Prior to this, we were doing it, but it wasn't in our code that an evaluation committee would be pre-screening or reducing the applicants before they went to the selection. So, what we're doing is putting everybody on notice. This is part of our process.
And the reason that the language was added about council being able to sit in on the SAC, because for every SAC proposal that I sat in on, where companies were brought in individually, they were closed to the public. Each company would come in, make their presentation, would leave, and the next one would bring, would come in. A city attorney, if the city council acts as SAC, then that has to be an open meeting, which might make some companies uncomfortable, because under, in a closed meeting, they might reveal things to the SAC that they may not want out in the public. So, now, as a city council required to have open meetings, what would the procedure look like? Should we act as SAC, and we have three companies coming in, making their presentations, before we may rank them similar to what SAC does now?
Well, I thought it was still going to be them, closed unto them with the code of silence, but it would be open for them. No?
Are you saying, are, are you saying that the code of silence would not apply to city council members?
Mm-mm.
No, I'm not saying that. But I thought that if they were going to be the SAC, that, I mean, it would be closed outside, but they, it would be open, you know, it would be open for them.
I think the question that he's trying to ask, SAC, if staff handles that, it's a closed meeting. If we are the SAC, not city council, but we are acting in the capacity as a selection advisory committee, I think the question that he's trying to ask is, will that meeting have to be open to the public, or can it still be closed, because we are actually acting in the capacity as selection advisory committee?
I, I think that's a legal question, because I don't think that's an exemption to the sunshine.
Correct.
So, let us talk to staff, and we'll come back with you on that.
Yeah, it was just one that I was sitting up here thinking of. I would say, well, it's a little bit different now, because we're an elected body that's required to have open meetings, unless we declare a shared executive session, and I'm not sure this would fall under that, since we're basically taking proposals to make a decision. So, that, that was one critical, critical question, but I have no problem with 100,000. Again, the word "any" is okay, because I don't think we'll abuse it. You know, I really don't, and I don't think future councils will abuse it. So, I'm not, I'm not going to start creating scenarios where, you know, we could go off on a tangent on that, but just, you know, just remember the possibilities that could exist with that word. Thank you.
Councilmember Steinkie.
Thank you. Councilmember Hayden is going to shoot me, because we've had conversations before about me switching horses in the middle of the race on other occasions, but I always like to come to these meetings, kind of like with one thing on my mind, and that is, what don't I know about this issue? And so, after hearing some additional commentary and answer, and the answer to some questions from Mr. Mason, when I look at the fact that we have these continuing contracts, and they, as I understand it, most of those continuing contracts don't go beyond a three-year period, where they have to come and re-engage the contract with us. Is that, is that about true?
Yeah, the current continuing contracts that are in place was for a seven-year period.
Seven?
Seven-year. And now, we're in the process of developing the criteria to go back out on the street, and redo the process, and select new continuing contracts.
Okay, and would we typically have a continuing contract with more than one discipline, if you will? More than one surveyor, more than one...
Yes. And we also have, in our ordinance, in changes, that we may rotate them, you know, from, from job to job as well.
Right. Okay, so, you know, I, I'd like to at least honor the state, you know, taking a look at this, from the position that they do, as they think about all the cities across the state. And there's got to be a reason why they changed it. And so, with us being, you know, one of the most progressive and developmental cities in the state, with the growth that we've been involved with, and that we'll continue to be involved with, it would seem like we are a city that would be a poster child for why the state switched their numbers, so to speak, to, bless you, to allow for quicker implementation of those things that we, as a body, have already said, we want to go down this path, we want this project to commence. It would allow us to commence quicker. And so, I, I think I don't have as much concern or fear about the $500,000 limit, based on a $4 million project or less. And, and so, I would come off of the, of the, I don't want us to be micromanaging things as a council. And so, if we've already said we want to do this project, and we've already said that, hey, we've used these contractors in the past before, and they do compete with one another, because they have to submit their, their new bids, if you will, to be on this continuing contract with us, the one thing that I would, you know, consider is if we have multiple players in each discipline, that we don't have them all renew at the same time, we have them renew at staggered times, so they all know that they're competing, you know, with one another, and if they don't keep themselves competitive, that they won't get the work when the work comes. So, I'm, I've switched horses. I'm sorry, Councilmember Hayden, but I would, I can see why the state did what they did, and I, I don't think that I'd have a problem with us using the statute as they've, as they've put it forward. Thanks.
Yeah, I think the question, it sounds like there's, you know, two issues here that we got to give staff the direction, and I guess at some point, we'll go down the list here. One being the section, when the city council can be the selection advisory committee, we could add the word "any," and by a majority vote of city council. And I, I think that's important to mention. You know, I would hope a majority of city council, if one particular individual wanted to look at some of the minor procurement process, we're not going to go down that path. That's why it's a majority vote of council. I think there's going to be, like I said, I've been here five years, I can only think of maybe two or three instances, where it would even been a discussion, for the possibility to do that. So, to sit here and think, we're going to be micromanaging staff, I think, is definitely outside of the realm of the intent. So, I think that's one question. We could either keep the paragraph that's under 2-144, in ordinance 24-22, section 5, number 2, and it says, "As an alternate to the selection advisory procurement described in A4, above the city council may elect to waive some or all the procurement process in the code and serve as a direct procurement authority for the procurement of goods and services." The role of the direct procurement authority, the city council will perform the role that was otherwise performed by the selection advisory committee. To me, that's pretty straightforward, it's pretty simple. Or, you just add the word "any," and by a majority vote of council, and the one that they've, that they've changed out for that same section. To me, it's as simple as that. It just leaves it broad. City council can do what they want, you know, by a majority vote. As far as the $100,000 threshold, I think, you know, I think we can still get to where the city manager wants to get by 500,000. He just needs to come out and say, city council, hey, for this reason, I want to move forward. It's a simple yes or no. It doesn't have anything to do with the nine months of procurement. They can still, they can still follow the Florida statute, once we give him or her the okay to do that. So, I don't have a problem with it, Mr. Hayden, or Councilmember Hayden, I'm sorry.
Councilmember, I'm, I'm fine with what you said. Actually, I can, I can go either way on this one, because the fact of the matter is, most of these items end up on the consent agenda item anyway. We review them. You know, I've seen three or four or five million dollar items on the consent agenda all the time, and they're passed, and we seldom pull them. We do our homework, we understand that it makes sense, that it's reasonable for the city. So, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm good with what the, with what the mayor said. You're off the hook this time.
Yeah, all right. I guess we'll start then with Councilmember Long.
Actually, I wanted you guys to finish your discussion, before I talked about something a little separate in the provision. So, if I could step in really quickly regarding, I mean, the whole purpose of this process, obviously, is to clarify ambiguities and make things more concise. And so, one of the things that I had a discussion with, with the city manager yesterday, was that I had set through the previous round of offers or bids, or whatever you want to call it, the SAC oversaw for Academic Village. And one of the deficiencies that I, that I perceived in the process was, there were some misunderstandings in the SAC with regards to their perceived inability to reach back out to some of the proposers or bidders, or however we're classifying them. Were you able to find, or get an answer as to whether that's clarified in, in the language here that we're modifying in other ways?
I was not, but I will, you can ask the question. So, the question was during the Academic Village...
I was, I was there.
There was...
Yes, sir.
Yes.
During the Academic Village, there was some questions that the committee felt like they wanted to ask the vendors that were not asked in the original presentation, but there was a perception that they could not call back the vendors and ask those questions. And I had mentioned that in two previous procurements, both on 47th Terrace and Southwest 6 and 7. Once the presentations were over, there were still unanswered questions. We brought the vendors back in for a second round of presentations, and Councilmember Long wanted to make sure that that is available to future SACs.
Always been available.
Okay, because to me, one of those bids, and I believe you recalled the discussion, because you felt a certain way about the bid that I'm referring to, is that there was a member of the SAC that had desired, or said that they had a desire to ask a couple different questions, that would have maybe opened the door to opportunities with that particular bid, that otherwise wouldn't have been available if they didn't have those answers. And so, to me, the part of that process, which is a deficiency that I'm referring to, is that died on, on the table, the SAC table in this case, without any further discussion, that would have allowed an opportunity to go further with that particular bid. Does that make sense?
It, it does. At, at the time, and I recall the, I recall the meeting, what we had was, is the SAC committee had met and listened to the, to the proposals. I think we asked the questions we asked. And then, when we sat back in that meeting and had that discussion, the negotiator, you know, the selection, actually, in ranking them, it, it, you know, I think at the time, yeah, there may have been a couple of questions, but I don't think anybody really thought that, you know, we needed to bring them back in at the time to do it. But we can. If we need to bring somebody back in, we can do that. I don't want there to be any misunderstandings about that. Yeah, she's having a hard time talking. Which, which I think she, I hate to actually do this, but in this particular circumstance, we had a group that was identified by the city manager to be the, the advisory committee, to make the selection and ranking of the, of the proposers. And so, a little different than this SAC committee that's identified in here, but at the same time, I do want to make sure that, you know, if we, as the body, elected to bring them back in to, to answer questions, we could have done that.
So, the process that I witnessed is outside the purview of what we're talking about here?
It's outside the SAC, the selection advisory committee, that means as a particular group up here.
See, that's where the confusion comes from, because I have an email here that specifically designates that group as the selection advisory committee.
Correct, but not as this type of selection advisory committee. Sorry if that...
Someone tells me that, I'm going to this provision. I mean, I don't know...
I'll have to look into what you have. As, I wasn't part of that...
It just says, "The selection advisory committee is interviewing three respondents who submitted proposals for Academic Village." So, how else was I supposed to interpret that?
I, I believe your interpretation would be on its face. It was called the selection advisory committee.
But not this selection advisory committee?
I'm not aware of any selection advisory committee that exists outside of this one. I know we have technical review committees and evaluations. I'll have to work with staff and figure out what the nuance is of that, that terminology.
I think it was the terminology that was used at the time, that they'll, that this group of people will select and rank those people. That's, and so, by calling it that, you know, it's, it's just a term of art in this particular case, but in this, it, it doesn't meet the, the standard of the selection advisory committee that's identified in the ordinance, which is specific to the CCCNA.
So, then, my question would be, where does the power to enact that particular board come from, if it's not in this specific ordinance? Because it sounds to me like it would be an RFP-type process, but completely outside of this purview here.
It would be, it would be an RFP process.
Yes.
Where somebody had designated an ad hoc selection advisory committee. I can see how that causes concerns. I could see how that may misdirect somebody to a section of the code that's not applicable. I will work with staff on, on creating a name, terminology for that, if there's not already one defined in the, in the procurement process.
Sure, I'm not saying it was intentional, but I'm just kind of opening up the idea that there's so much confusion surrounding this, because these processes are so similar. And so, if we spend an hour or two talking about the SAC here, but there's a completely sub, separate subcommittee that basically does the same thing under a different terminology, and those aren't bound to these particular rules, it's a different set. Where is that set? So, where do we, we need to bring it in a little bit.
Maybe some discussion on that process to, to help on the education side. So, there are times when the selection advisory committee is utilized for non-professional service procurements. So, for example, the Waste Pro contract went through a formal SAC review, where the executive leadership of the city reviewed waste management, BFI, Waste Pro, and all the proposals. I don't, don't have them all, but the SAC sometimes is utilized for non-CCNA activities. Conversely, there are what you might consider to be high-profile procurements that do not utilize the SAC. It utilizes some, a departmental review and review of the, of the RFP. We try to get it right. We try to use the SAC, because it is executive leadership, when we realize there is a procurement of significant interest to the community, or the council, or the organization. In a situation like this, where it was, it sounds like it was the disposition of a piece of real property, they probably used an RFP process, and a committee of staff was put together to evaluate the responses to the RFP. I, I think I understand what you're saying now. I wasn't part of that process, but I think I understand what you're saying. And so, understanding when and who, there is discretion in the organization on when the SAC is selected. Some departments will elect to send items to the SAC, some, some will not. They'll do it within their department. But there is a formal SAC when it comes, definitely comes to CCCNA.
So, just to bring it full circle, then, one of the purposes where this spawned in the last discussion that we had, came from Academic Village, which I guess at that point in time, we thought was the SAC that's received here. And so, we had a discussion, the same one that we're having now, that would, in theory, give us the authority to act as that SAC. But after what you're telling me, even if we move forward with this and the mayor's proposals, that would be outside of this specific SAC that we're spending time here talking about today. talking about today, and we otherwise would not have the authority as a council to elect to do that, because it's a completely separate method to get to that point.
I think...
I mean, if that SAC isn't this SAC, and we're talking about giving us the authority to be this SAC, we wouldn't even, even if we make the changes here today, we wouldn't even retroactively have been able to do what spawned this whole process, which was review Academic Village, because that was apparently not this SAC. So, that's where my whole confusion comes from, because that was the whole reason that we had this discussion eight months ago. Just, I mean, there's a lot going on.
Valid point. If the intent, I think, of council was to be reviewers of RFPs, reviewers of SACs...
Not particularly, but that's what spawned the discussion. So, I imagine that that was why we had that discussion, was a direct result of how that process unfolded. So, then to be brought forward to this, saying that we can act as the SAC when we want to, but that's not the same SAC is counterintuitive, I think.
I think I can clarify this. If you look at exactly Section 8, it says, Section 2-144, contracting for goods and/or services through a RFP. So, you would be covered under the RFP. It's, and it even says, via ordinance 24-22, contracting a good through services through an RFP.
So, Wanda, was Academic Village an RFP?
Academic Village was a sort of solicitation called a call for offer.
So, it was not an RFP?
Honestly, I'm going to try to make this as, any solicitations, how we understand the ordinance, especially the changes that we're doing right now, to try to clarify. The selection advisory committee is very specific, like city manager has stated, for CCNA-related items. And it has been utilized for solid waste. It has been utilized for insurance. It has been utilized for other aspects. We have, it has even been utilized for coral oaks when we have gone out for outsourcing. The RFP has always stated that a city manager, city manager designate can rank. So, they have, we have created ad hoc evaluation committees, and they're the ones that evaluate. How I understand even this change in us making the document, you know, send the document to you of all the requests for proposal, if council chooses to act as the selection advisory committee, it would be a selection advisory committee following the structure of the SAC per the CCNA, but for any item, anything. Bid are a little bit different, and I was here sitting down, and like I said, I had to talk. I'm very careful with wording because of sometimes some of this confusions. And I apologize at a time, but request for proposal, I never call them bids. Bids have a connotation of public opening, and that has completely different statute. So, that's, we only have one way to deal with bids. Request for proposal, request for information, anything else, council has the ability to tell us, "We want to sit as the SAC," but then it would activate the formal process. That's all it would do. So, if right now, we would have this in the ordinance, and you saw a call for offer, invitation to negotiate, a request for proposal, whatever project, and council as a whole said, "We want to sit as the SAC," that's who would be the committee. Just that kind of...
Councilmember Long, I have a comment, but I'll wait till you're done.
That's it for me. That's it for now.
Yeah, I mean, I will recall, and maybe you can address this, and I can't remember exactly how it was characterized, is request for information, is that in our ordinance? Is it specifically mentioned and outlined?
Request for information, it is now. But normally, request for information, what it is, is just telling vendors. The true connotation of it is saying, "Vendors, we're looking maybe to do a specific software, or we're looking to do X. Can you tell us what we don't know?" And by the way, we're going to use this information for a request for proposal. We don't award for a request for information. It's literally that, just asking information, asking vendors for a price range, just so as to have an idea maybe for budgeting. And that's done because there may not be a budget for that specific item, but we're needing to find out, do we need to add it to our budget, and what is it that we really should be asking? We have an idea what we want, but we're really not sure of all the items that will be needed.
So, is request for information, I'm looking for an answer to my question, request for information, is that in our ordinance and outlined how that process works?
It's not outlined in the process. It just states, "Any type of solicitations."
Okay.
And we had to clarify and put it on the ordinance, because we have used that type of methodology, just asking for information. And the, I'm sorry.
Because if I recall correctly, you know, I know that sometimes certain processes were called something differently. And I think this is kind of what your, your point that you were trying to make was, as soon as you call it something else, then a whole different process is utilized, and not the process that we may not have in front of us. So, I think with, with all of that being said in the discussion that we have had today, I think there's still some questions and some answers that we are looking for. And I know that Councilmember Long, you had mentioned a few of those yourself. What I think the next step should be in this particular ordinance is, it sounds like there's still a little more work that needs to be completed. And I would, as a council, I would be willing to give you a second. I know we can't do it now, because it's not a voting meeting, for you to work with staff and our city attorney's office and maybe define this ordinance a little further, so it's crystal clear. Would you be willing to do that?
Is there a stipend associated with that?
I'm sorry?
Is there a stipend associated with that?
Yeah.
You gotta go through the SAC.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, no, at the time when it's appropriate, I would make...
I mean, you made some valid points, so I figured, you know...
Yeah, I don't mind, I don't mind doing that.
So, maybe that's something moving forward, that we could have Councilmember Long work with staff in the city attorney's office, address some of the questions that I think council collectively brought up today, and also identify some of the concerns that he had mentioned as well.
What I was going to ask, based on the, because that discussion is threaded through this, when does council sit in? And there was also still some willingness to try to find a way to go to the 500, 400, but still have council be involved, but just maybe allow us to utilize those continuing contracts. If we extract those two items, is the balance of council okay with the rest of the ordinance moving through, but these two items that seem to be a sticking point, we hold in abeyance?
And what's the sense of urgency versus getting it right the first time?
Well, there's just a lot of items that have been sitting out there since October, and so, I think we're trying to put them, get them in place, get them off the table.
Okay.
My only question for that then would be, it sounds like what the mayor was saying also, which just ties into what I was saying, is it, how would it be affected if we, if I understood correctly, we don't have, we don't correctly identify in this code or anywhere else, all the different specific procedures that we can utilize, as far as an RFP and a call to offer and whatever else we want to call it. If we move forward adding that, would that in any way change this, or would we have to come back and doing what you proposed is moot anyways, or?
Right now, in 2-144, if you go through the main categories, A, you know, I don't know them off the top of my head, but A is piggybacking. B is request for proposals. C is invitation to bid. You know, D is continuing contracts, you know. E is purchases from other, used goods. So, we do outline all of those processes.
The only reason I say that is because I think the mayor just asked Wanda if we had RFI included in here, and I thought she had said no. Maybe I misunderstood. Is that how that played out? Okay.
That's the way I told it.
It's what we're adding to the ordinance. It's not currently in the current ordinance as it exists. It's being added to the ordinance. There's quite a few, there's a lot of really good things that are being added into the ordinance and clarifying in the ordinance that if we wait, you know, it's going to, just going to take that much longer to put into place. So, pulling these two items out, you know, I don't, I have to ask the city attorney, is that a material change to the ordinance? And can we intro, make the adjustment, and adopt two weeks from now on April 5? Or is that a material change to the ordinance that we are introducing?
If you make the changes before you introduce it, then it is a matter of a material change.
Right, but we're introducing it tonight.
I would prefer to see a complete ordinance moving forward, rather than everyone assuming that they're all on the same page up there. By the way, Mr. Mayor, I think what you were looking for was call for offer.
Call for offer, there you go.
That's what it was, see, you have a city example.
Yep. For me personally, let's get it right the first time. That means it takes another 30 days. It takes another 30 days. That's just my position on it. Councilmember Hayden?
Yeah, I think there's a lot of other questions that need to be answered. For instance, if the meetings are going to be open. Number two, when the SAC made, and I don't know if it's in the ordinance or not, Wanda, but the SAC made a recommendation only to the city manager. The city manager didn't have to follow a recommendation. He could have went with another offer. So, if the council acts as the SAC, does that become the final decision, or is it still a recommendation to the city manager on what to do? I don't know if that's in, specifically in the ordinance or not, but that's how every SAC meeting ended. Point total, we'll get in touch, but it's the city manager's call, and if he wants to move forward with it. So, you've got that extra step in there now. So, is the city, is the city council then becoming the city manager and making the final decision?
Sounds like we have a lot of questions still need to be answered. So, you know, for me, I would pull the item for introduction tonight, get it right, go back to the, make sure we have all of our i's dotted and our t's crossed. So, that would be my recommendation. Rest of the council agree with that?
I'm...
Yep. Councilmember Shepherd?
I don't want to encumber any progress. I mean, it sounds like Mr. Mason has some things that he thinks are going to be beneficial to the city if we move forward in extracting just these two particular issues. I obviously agree that we should get it right the first time, but...
We can still extract the items and bring it back for introduction on April 5. I understand the city attorney's concerns that, you know, yes, you know, we can, we can extract those two items and come back and, and bring forward all these other items on April 5 on introduction, while at the same time, working on a future ordinance change for the two items that we're specifically talking about.
Okay, so that satisfies both sides' desire then to move forward. And, okay, that's fine with me. Thank you.
If you're all okay with that.
Well, it sounds like, let's go back and ask again, because that's something different, ma'am.
What is the question?
Well, the question is, do we pull it completely and make sure Councilmember Long has the opportunity to go through it, identify any needs, you know, because if we approve it and just extract those two items, and then he comes across something, then we're back to the drawing board. We got to bring it back anyway. So, to me, give him the opportunity to go through the whole ordinance, make any recommendations, work with staff, work with the city attorney's office, and then bring it back. And the city attorney even said, you know, if we go trying to change it, now I guess we could remove items, that she wouldn't recommend that. To me, we just get it right the first time. If it's another 30 days, it's another 30 days. Or do we, or do we just extract those two particular items, and if Councilmember Long happens to find something else, we're going to have to bring it back anyway. So, I think that's the two, the question that we're looking for. Do we table the item, give Councilmember Long, the staff, and the city attorney's office time to work on it, or do we just extract those two particular items that are in the ordinance and move forward the way it is written now, and then we'll come back and address it later?
Yeah, either way, I'm about to come back.
So, for me, it's get it right the first time. We make decisions as a collective council, so whatever the majority rules, that's the way we will move forward. Councilmember Cosson, or you want to answer first? Go ahead, Councilmember Ross. Stanky?
Okay, thanks. So, I'm just going back to the way you positioned it before. That's two items.
Well, Councilmember Long brought up another item.
Okay. So, if given all or nothing, then I say we go after it all. If now we have three things that we would address, if there's something we can address here, so that that piece can move along, then we could do that. So, one of the three points, I think, is pretty simple. Can we be SAC on anything? That's the one, that was the one point, that we certainly could all make a decision on whether, because that's pretty straightforward. The other ones, as far as it relates to 100 versus 500, and, you know, and what about ad hoc, you know, got to have a new name for them. It can't be SAC, so you call some other people together to form an opinion or, you know, make a recommendation. That's, so there's item number three. So, if, if we can handle something here, let's handle something here. But if, if it's an all or nothing, then I'd say let's go after it all. If it's a, we're definitely have three items, then we could go down the line on each one of those three items and...
Yeah. The only thing, point I'd like to make is, Councilmember Long, his comments were much more on a broader sense, I would feel. And I think his issue that he brought up has a lot more of an impact on this ordinance versus 100 to 500,000, and adding a word "any." To me, that's pretty minor. You know, I think that we could accomplish. But the discussion that he had and the concerns that he brought up took it to a different level for me. Is that, is that kind of how you saw, Councilmember?
Yeah, that makes sense. I mean, but I don't, I don't know that I think that we couldn't still carve out particular portions that the finance director thinks would prohibit him from moving forward with whatever it is that he thinks this achieves, and then allowing me the opportunity to go back. Either way, I'm going to have to come back, it sounds like, and revise this in some way, shape, or form. So, if we can carve those portions out, and even if I have to add, I don't think any of the things that I'm adding would go against some of the things that staff's trying to move forward with regards to the timelines and those sorts of things that I believe you referred to. And I might be misunderstanding that, but it sounds like his desire to carve certain things out are completely outside of the things that I would potentially be looking at.
Yeah, I mean, if you look, if you look at the exclusions for artwork and the exclusions for entertainment-related expenses, if you go through all the other items in there, you know, what happens if we get a tie bid? What happens if we get a no bid? Changing the, you know, adding the P3 section. I thought, you know, based on the discussion, it looked like there was really a couple sticking points that, and then what you brought up really does kind of intertwine with that, when does count this section here, making sure that it covers, as the mayor said, "any." So, it's just a matter of getting that wording right.
What would your suggestion be then?
My suggestion would be that, you know, I don't feel like those two items, and then covering what you brought up, are going to interfere with any of the other elements, which is why I had asked, can we just move, extract those two and move forward with the balance? Because there, a lot of these are clarifications for vendors on the other side that need this clarity.
Mm-hmm. Council okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. Got your answer.
Thank you.
All right. All right, let's move on to the next item on the agenda, roundtable items. I believe, Mr. City Manager, you had a topic, a discussion you wanted to talk about real quickly, quasi judicial hearings?
Yeah, I thought it would be, I know it's, the hour's getting late, I had, need some type of break. I don't know if you want to take a break, if you want to go...
How long do you think at?
Vince, what do you?
I'll be less than five minutes, hopefully.
So, the idea is, we have a fairly large quasi judicial hearing coming up next week, and I thought it would be a good idea to just, you know, not necessarily policy discussion that we need input on, but more of an educational, why do we have them, you know, what is the reason for them? Who is involved? When do they, are they triggered? What discretion you all have? And so, I would like to just utilize a couple of minutes to kind of lay that groundwork this way between now and next week, or at any point in the future, you have a general understanding of what role the council serves in a quasi judicial hearing. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Vince.
Thanks. Just a technical problem. Help me with slideshow from the beginning. Thank you. Okay, I think we're ready to go. No, we're not. Oh, one of the arrows. Okay. Sorry about that, really sorry. So, what we wanted to do is talk about the who, what, why, where, how, to try to take this in bite-sized pieces. And we, we wanted to talk about the three types of cases... And we, we wanted to talk about the three types of cases that we deal with mostly in Development Services Department. And we broke them into these three. Ministerial, which is an act that is performed in accordance with procedures, and individual judgment and discretion is not a factor. An example of that I'm going to give you is a plat, a subdivision plat, in a moment. That is an item you approve, but it is an item that doesn't take into account testimony or any recommendation of staff other than whether it meets the code or not. Then we get into the two that you hear more often. Legislative, these are your comprehensive plan amendments and land use amendments. And there's a chart coming up in a minute, and you'll see that. And that's really, it results in the formulation of a rule based on policies and broad discretion. Then we have the quasi judicial. So let's really talk about what that word means for a minute. If you take the word quasi, it means similar or like. And of course judicial, think of the judiciary or the court system. So these hearings take on that formality, as you're very well aware. You make the final decision, in some cases, most of them, and specific rules are applied based on policy. But you're having policy discussions here as well, but you're basing them on testimony. And the big factor there is what we call substantial incompetent evidence. Okay? So here's, here's another part of the what. On the ministerial side, you're dealing with a plat. A plat is basically an engineering and a surveying exercise. And once that document is brought to you, and it's creation of a new subdivision, whether it's commercial, industrial, or residential, the most common is residential, but you have them in commercial and you have them in industrial. What happens is the first two parts are completely administrative. Our team reviews them and our engineer of record signs off on them. And then we review construction plans, it's all done behind the scenes, and then you receive it on your consent agenda. Sometimes they're pulled, very rarely, for questions, and we answer them, but it's basically a technical exercise. Then we get into the legislative and the quasi judicial. The legislative includes land use amendments and comprehensive plan text amendments. That's to your master plan, the Cape Coral Comprehensive Plan. You have these all the time, and they fall into the legislative category. You're basing this on broad policy. And then annexations, they fall into that category too. The quasi judicial on the far right, I'm sorry about the spacing here, we, I should have fixed that, I apologize. There are at least six that are heard in the city of Cape Coral, and these are the six, I believe, that we hear the most. Rezonings, plan development project amendments, this is something fairly new, we didn't have an amendment procedure or formal amendment procedure to the old plan development projects, we do now. And then the third one, PUDs, that's a zoning category. So you, PUDs are also rezonings. And then you have your garden variety rezoned, residential to commercial, vice versa. Special exceptions, we have very few of those these days since we changed the code. Variances and vacations. Vacations, there are three types, alley, easement, and road, essentially. Well, who does this? You do and the hearing examiner. You don't do all of them, okay? The hearing examiner has final say on variances, but they can be appealed to you. You hear the rest. So when does this happen? Well, both hearings allow public comments, and in the quasi judicial hearing, members are sworn in and they can be cross-examined. That's a, an item that was contained in detail in the 2019 code. We do not do it often. We've done it a couple of times, we've done it on a legislative case, we did it on annexations, we also do it on quasi judicial, we've done it on some zone changes, we've done it on appeals. When the cases get to be a little bit more involved or they're contentious, you'll see cross-examination. So what will happen is, we will tell the mayor beforehand that we wish to invoke that clause, and then the parties come up and state their case, and then people come up and offer testimony. In a quasi judicial, they're sworn, as we just talked about, and the clerkswears in everybody at every hearing, as you're aware. Then what the mayor would do is ask the parties if they wish to cross-examine, turn to city staff and turn to the applicant and their representative. Usually it's a lawyer, but it doesn't have to be. And we start asking people questions. We've only done this about two or three times since I've been here, but that's something that the code allows. The large majority of them, we don't cross-examine, as you know. Now, decisions in quasi judicial have to be based on competent substantial evidence, but please don't confuse my words by thinking that when you have a comprehensive plan amendment, you're not basing it on substantial evidence. What this means is, hearsay isn't substantial and competent evidence. People are asked to give their expertise and talk to you about it, and even if a resident speaks to you about impacts to a neighborhood on a rezone, you want to hear the factual information. In other words, if somebody comes up to you at a rezone hearing and says, I don't want that type of housing next to me, just because they don't, that's not substantial incompetent evidence. They have to give you reasons why. Their opinion is valid, they can state their opinions all day long. That's what they do, and that's what you do as elected officials, is listen to your constituency. But when you get into a quasi judicial hearing, it has to be based on, on something more concrete. The legislative decisions have a little bit lesser standard because they're based on policy issues that affect the entire county. That's where you get into land use decisions, you're looking at the broader picture. Why? Well, it's standard practice in planning and zoning cases, not only in Florida but nationally, quasi judicial hearings. Now, in some states, things differ. There are some states that consider their comprehensive plan amendments to be quasi judicial. We don't, in the state of Florida. It's a legislative policy decision made by the elected officials. How it happens, you're familiar with, they submit an application to us, and then the process contains three components. Staff reviews it, and then we, and then the middle part's the longest part, discussions, meetings, and all kinds of communication going back and forth. And those discussions include discussions with yourselves as well, and internally in staff. And then Development Services, the Planning Division prepares a final report, and then hearings take place. Any questions?
Any questions for staff?
Mr. Mayor, may I ask Vince a question to elaborate? Vince, can you elaborate on when council has the opportunity to seek more or less than what either staff or the applicant is seeking? So is, does that, is that option allowable in a ministerial matter such as a plat? Only legislative or only the quasi judicial? So.
On the ministerial part, I don't believe that, that, that happens because you either meet the code or you don't, so it's a yes or a no. It's not like, well, we only want two lots to be platted, they're not three. So my answer would be no, and I know the city attorney will correct me if I make a mistake here. On the legislative side, I've seen county commissions, city commissions, and city councils do that, where at a public hearing, some without re-advertising, some with re-advertising. We usually follow the more conservative route and re-advertise, and that is if, as the city manager asks you, change it. In other words, somebody comes in and asks for a change from low density to high density residential. And the council hears testimony and says, well, we think medium might be better if you had such a category. Some, some attorneys will tell their councils they can do that on the record, so that's, that's an issue that Dolores would have to answer without re-advertising. But they can ask, and they can ask the applicant to make changes. Whether or not you have to have another public hearing depends on the legal advice you get, and the same thing would hold for zoning. If you wanted a higher intensity zoning, like C4 on commercial, but no, we don't think that's right for that neighborhood, we'll go down to C1 or C2. More often than not, your attorney is going to tell you, even if the applicant is willing to re-advertise, because that's not what the public was told during the advertisement. But to answer the city manager's question, it can happen. I've seen it happen often, with or without advertisements, new advertisements in the newspaper.
Thank you, Vince. Councilmember Long?
Yeah, real quickly, just out of curiosity for context, was there a certain hearing, I guess, that precipitated this discussion, or?
Not that I'm aware of. Mr. Ilchison asked me to.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that there wasn't something in the past that we should have known this information for, and that way I could.
No, it's just an education.
Okay, I appreciate it.
No policy involved here, it was just an educational session. Next week, we have the Hudson Creek.
Yep.
And so I wanted to make sure that you all had some general understanding of the differences, why there's quasi judicial, when there's not. This way, if you have any questions about that item or any item in the future, you have an idea, a basis of framework.
No, Hudson Creek is a good enough reason, that was the answer I was looking for. Thank you.
Madam City Attorney?
To reiterate what Mr. Cataro said, this is the law in Florida. And a lot of people are really not accustomed to it, and a lot of people think it sounds good when they first hear about it, but when they actually see it applied, they're not as happy. Okay? And I say that not because of the ministerial, the ministerial is, I'm not going to say throwaway, but it's, yeah. Hardly anybody gets upset about ministerial because it's pretty much a yes or no, so. But the, about 30 years ago, rezonings were not quasi judicial, they were, they were legislative. And it was routine to go to a governmental body that was dealing with a rezoning or a land use and see them say, all in favor of this land use change, stand up. All against this land use change, stand up. And they'd pretty much count. And then they, a lot of times, they'd make their decision significantly weighing it on the popularity of the proposition that was before them. But in the, I think in the late 80s or very early 90s, there was case law, at least in Florida, that said, these things are not the application of policy or the development of policy. These things are more like a judge. They're more like a judge applying policy or law to a specific case, to a specific instance. And that's when that changed. Now, that sounds really good, okay? It sounds good, but if you're a neighbor and you used to be able to just stand up and be like, I don't like it, it's going to be too crowded, it's going to be too dark, I don't know, too, too, whatever. They, we used to be able to just do that by standing up and being counted. But now, land use decisions, true land use decisions are not quasi judicial, they are legislative policy, because they're, you're establishing your vision for the future. But when it comes to applying those, because that this property has the current land use, it now has to be rezoned to A, B, C, D, or one of these. And then what happens is, they can't, you can't count anymore, because now it's the application of law to a specific instance. And so what happens is, the neighbor comes in and says, it's going to be really crowded, the traffic is going to be really bad. And that used to be enough, but it's not enough anymore, unless the tra, unless your neighbor happens to be a traffic engineer, then it's enough, because this whole substantial competent evidence puts a lot of weight on professionals. So it puts a lot of weight on transportation engineers, transportation planners, city planners, things of that kind. Those are considered to be experts. The neighbors, it's like, they can testify about the view, they're considered to be an expert in that. So their ability to hold sway has really been reduced. I know they don't always feel like it, but they feel like it if you say, I can't take that into consideration. Or I recommend you go get a traffic engineer. And then that starts costing money that standing up in a room didn't used to do. Just mentioning it, but I have no disagreement at all with what Vince has put up there.
Oh, thank you. I would agree. The reason I ask that is because these are incredibly important principles that I think should, frankly, they should be crammed down our throats when we first come on here. I mean, the principle, in particular the SCE, the substantial competent evidence, competent evidence, is incredibly important, and it doesn't always necessarily tie into logic, but it would be incumbent, which I'm glad that you brought it forth, for us to realize that our hands are tied in certain instances where we can't allow comments like the ones you'd referred to, or whether someone says, well, I'm on a diet and I don't want McDonald's on the corner because I have to pass it every day. That's not substantial competent evidence, but believe it or not, there are, you know, certain bodies that would weigh that into consideration without having the realization that they're bound to these principles. So to that end, could you, because I don't see it on the agenda, could you at least email it to the members of council so that we have that as a reference?
Absolutely. And the point of this was education, so over the next week, two weeks, if you have any questions about the content, details, I also intend on next week, seeing if Vince can join me on the one-on-one, so that if there are further elaborations or specifics related to any item that was presented, we can discuss those as well.
Awesome. Thank you, guys.
Okay, any other roundtable discussions? Okay, seeing none, time, place, a future meeting. We have a regular meeting of the Cape Coral City Council scheduled for today, Wednesday, March 22nd, 2023, beginning 4:30 PM here in council chamber. Motion to adjourn?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.